Good morning. This is a special meeting in the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is the 27th day of August 2013. It's now 8:30 a.m. As we do all meetings, we will start with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag. I'd like to ask the Commissioners Court to lead us in those two pledges, so please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. We're going to take at least one item out of order. Just so the public knows, I will be leaving about 9 a.m. to go to a meeting in Austin, so I'll leave it in the hands of Commissioner Hernandez and the remaining court members. Public comment? Consent. Are there items under consent any member of the court wish to take out and discuss separately?
I have one double D.
Double D? Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve consent with the exception of item double D that will be discussed separately? Moved by Commissioner Hernandez. Second by Commissioner Sanchez. Discussion. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries? If it's going to take long, or can we take it?
No, it's quickie.
Okay, double D. Building maintenance office staff, building maintenance supervisor, travel to Austin, Texas.
What is a stewardship workshop, Arden?
I don't know. I was brought up here because there was actually an error on the agenda. It needed to be, it needed to include the 18th as well. It's, it says 10, 7, 10, 16?
Well, that doesn't answer the question.
He's actually...
Frank?
The Texas Historical Commission every year has a workshop for county officials who deal with maintenance of four houses.
Do they need to go? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Go move.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Sanchez.
With correction.
With the correction on the date.
Correction, the 18th.
All in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries? I'm going to go to claims. Well, let me go. Do you have any budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and go through that, and then we'll do claims.
Line item transfers are for engineering, for Operation Stone Garden, Parks Administration, South Texas HIDA, and Andy Bowie Park, Civil Division, General Cleanup, General Administration, Parks. And in the parks, you have allocation of fund balance to pay their incurring legal fees, ongoing current fees with the, one of the cases. And Public Works, also allocation of diesel to cover miscellaneous repairs and road materials. You also have salary schedules for DA's office. I believe they're all for the DA's office. Yes, for your approval.
Do I hear a motion? Any questions? Motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Sanchez. All in favor, say by saying aye. Any opposed? Item carries? Approval of claims. You may want to explain what we're doing with payroll.
Claims, I have warrants number 306682 through 307038. I have one payroll check for your approval, $2,988.61. Payroll is set to be, payroll will be dated August the 30th. It is not ready yet. It will be ready late tomorrow, so payroll will be released with a court's permission, as is the norm, and it will be approved at the next meeting. It's estimated to be between 1.6, 1.7 million.
And we're doing this as an estimate because most of us, not all of us, will be out of town on Thursday, so we wouldn't have had a quorum. Anything else on claims?
On claims, we're approving the contracts, which are warrants number 30668406719. I would request the court to release the contract payments on August the 29th for those contract payments that need to be sent out of town, and on August the 30th for the claims, for the contract payments for the vendors that are in town.
Anything else?
I have one void, 306659. It's a void check for a judge who is not going on a conference, going to a conference.
Motion to approve? Moved by Commissioner Hernandez. Do I have a second by Commissioner Benavides? Any further discussion? All in favor, say by saying aye. Please note my abstention on the affidavits I will provide to you.
Aye.
Let me go to the budget. Item D, discussion of possible action regarding the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget.
Judges and Commissioners, I had emailed out to you, and it's also before you, the worksheet of where we are today. It's the same format as it was last week. What I have included after last week was the discussion of the legal fees, anticipated legal fees for this next fiscal year, applicable to the general fund, which is $110,000. And then last Friday, we learned that Tropical Texas, MHMR, had received a grant, and so the county's portion of the match is $130,000. So that has been included in there. The county airport, and I'm trying to recall if we spoke about this last week or not, but the Commissioners Court had committed to several projects for, or improvement projects at the airport, and then allocating or approving the match for the grants from TechDOT. This next fiscal year, they will be working on the fueling station there. Based on the projected revenues at this point for the airport and the available funds that they have, at the end of the fiscal year, they're going to be short about $43,000. And so they're showing an operational transfer of $43,000 to the airport unless there's somewhere else that the court wants to designate those funds from. And so what that would leave at that point, and that also includes the positions that had been previously discussed as tentatively approved, that would leave a remainder of just over $98,000. Below that, it's still all the requests. What hadn't been there, and there's a presentation about it today, was the Sprint GPS monthly fee, and then adding the additional general fund vehicles to that program. If you recall, the county had entered into a pilot program with Sprint, installing these units. I believe it was 124, 25 vehicles. Some of those were general funds, some road and bridge, some parks. They're making a presentation today as far as how that has gone. But if the court were to decide to continue with that, those were the costs associated with that that are not currently within the budget.
Let's go real quick, because there was some discussion some time back about implementing this and what the potential savings are, or were, or would be. Were y'all able to gauge what the savings would be this coming fiscal year if we did this?
They have a, actually Sprint is going to do a presentation today. We did not have a long enough timeframe to project any type of savings. Actually, once you see the presentation, you'll see that the effectiveness of this is geared more toward accident prevention and...
Accountability.
Accountability, and be able to track vehicles where they are and everything. We do not have enough of a time span to be able to gauge any type of savings. And probably a better, a better picture to look at, or another timeframe, would be probably within a year, to carry the program for conceivably six months or a year, and compare it to prior history, and you would probably see better law enforcement, better safety measures being undertaken, and better accountability.
Well, that was a discussion that we had, and I think that was the concern that some of us had, was being able to quantify the amount. Because you're not going to, right now, you cannot book a reduction in expenditures because of this. So this coming year, the flat-out $100,000 is what we're looking at, right? 83, 30, no, it's like $120,000 in additional add to the budget. Correct?
Right.
And is this all general fund revenue, or?
This, this, what I have here is strictly general fund. There are the other vehicles and equipment that are within the parks, road and bridge. I think Bridge System had some, and Public Works, and they would pay for their own monthly fee, or recurring charges, if the court wanted to continue with that, or add additional vehicles.
So really, nothing has changed from the last time. The requests are still the same. I will tell you what, I've gotten three requests for salary increases from elected officials. $25,000 that the sheriff is requesting, a little over $7,000 that the precinct two constable is requesting, and then the JP Sally Gonzalez is an unknown amount. She just sent the grievance, but without an amount associated with it. And I'm going to have to check with Legal, see if that's, you know, if we can do that. If you can't, I mean, I always thought that when you're going to grieve, you put the amount that you're going to grieve for.
Yeah, it has, it has to be.
Okay, if there's no amount, then it's, it's, it's void. It's not valid. Is that correct? That's what I'm hearing. Check it out. Okay, all right. And so you may want to put that as a contingency somewhere. Okay, and the other ones, nothing else is, I don't know if anybody else has looked at what they want to do. Now, there is some information down at the bottom regarding increase in tolls at the bridges, and I may not stay for the whole discussion, but let me, let me give you my take on it. I think to be increasing tolls at the bridges simply to balance the budget, everybody what they need, is not a good idea, especially when it comes to the commercial rates. We reduced the commercial rates some time back to try to increase bridge traffic, the truck traffic. We had a meeting recently with some of the trucking companies regarding issues that they had, not only with us, but with the Department of Public Safety. This is at the bottom. I know you haven't, you haven't booked it. And I just don't think it'd be a good idea at this point to raise the, the commercial rates. On the vehicle rates, that's something that, that we need to discuss a little bit further. On the pedestrian rates, downtown relies on that pedestrian traffic, and I know that 10 cents may not be a whole lot to, to a lot of people, but it is to those pedestrians that are coming over every single day and shopping downtown. So I would not recommend the, the increase in the pedestrians, nor on the, on the commercial rates. Those, that's my position on those. On the, on the auto, I'd have to look at a little bit more in terms of, is that a real number, Pete? Is that 100% collectible? Is there a percentage that, that you're estimating? And I don't know if you have that ready today.
The 899, 899,000 is 100% collectible.
Well, I'm talking about the 535.
Yes.
Everything. So everything is assuming 100% collectible, correct?
Correct.
You know, that's, that's being awfully risky to do that.
Correct, yes.
Those are just my, my 2 cents, and you can give me change.
10 cents.
10 cents. And you give me change. The other two items, there has been some discussion regarding the, the cost associated, and I'm going to, I'll punt this over to Commissioner Hernandez, but regarding the magistrate courts, and then the JP 2-3. The JP 2-3 is the newly created one, and if y'all will remember that the court created that, that JP spot for a specific reason. It was done to, to capture the, 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 the traffic coming in from veterans. It was also meant to be housed somewhere near veterans. Last week, or the last meeting, that changed. The, the portable buildings that we received from the school district, one was going to the, to the precinct two barn, the other one was going to go to Cameron Park as a substation. So now, as I see it, that the initial intent of the court, which was to do that, is no longer there. So the court may want to consider just eliminating that position altogether, save us $200,000 almost, because he, again, the initial intent of what we wanted is, is gone, at least for now. We can always come back and re-add it at some other point, but for now, I just don't see the purpose in, in continuing to fund that, that JP spot. So anyway, so with that, I don't know if there's anything else we need to address. It's, it's still 900,000, I don't know how much, did you have a subtotal as to how much the requests were? I know that we got $98,000. Everybody seems to think we have some kind of surplus. I keep reading that in emails, that there's this big surplus. And the surplus is only there if we don't fund anything. We don't give people what they need in terms of boots on the ground, sheriff's deputies, constables. The auditor doesn't get anything. The tax assessor collector doesn't get anything. We don't house any inmates, and we don't increase the, the overtime. So if we don't do any of that, then yeah, we have a $88,000 surplus. So we can go home now.
One, one thing that I did want to advise the court is, it was confirmed with the State Comptroller's Office yesterday that the, the state provides assistance, state aid for the county court at law.
Did you book that in here?
No, that is not booked in here.
How much is that?
It's going to be, it's going to increase from 252, from 225,000 to 252,000, so...
$30,000?
It's a $27,000 increase.
Per?
No, it's 9,000 per court, per court at law.
Oh, okay.
So it's going to be a total of 27,000.
What's that for, Martha?
It is, it is, the, the state provides 60% of the district judge's salary in assistance to, for the courts at law, for the county courts at law. So it's state aid that we get reimbursed from, well, we get...
So it's going to minimize the impact that we're going to have of funding the county courts of law judges because of the raises?
That's correct, yes.
When they increase, the district court judges are also saying, and here's a little bit of help, because we know you're going to have to pay your county court at law more...
Yes, it's tied in at, at 60% of the, of the district judge's salary. So that's, that's what that is.
So we're looking at 27?
Additional, yes.
Additional. So instead of making up 45, we're only going to make up 18?
Yes.
Well, that's not bad.
Well, but the 45 is exclusive of benefits. The 27 is a net number, just so we know that it's not just that. It's 45 plus benefits. Whatever that number is, less than 27 is what we're out. Correct?
Yes.
All right. Anyway, those, those were the two items. Those are the items that I wanted to talk about before I left. And Commissioner, if you're ready to go, you ready to go? I'll stay as long as I can.
No, I'm, I'm ready to wrap this up and go into next week when David's here.
David is here.
And when you're, when you're here, it's going to take a while to go through all this. Welcome, David.
Well, let's start. Is there anything you want to talk about today?
Yeah, I will bring up the magistrate issue, since we have one of the magistrates here. I was given information from the sheriff's office as the time spent at the county jail, and Mr. Padilla, can you, can I ask you some questions, if you don't mind?
I got both of them here.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess my concern is, I don't have the, I didn't bring my numbers with me, but the numbers that we received from the jail staff, or whoever from the Sheriff's Department, showed that in the four-month period, that, who is magistrate one, and who's magistrate two? One of you, okay? Anyway, it showed that the hours worked at the, on the magistrations issue was 45 hours for a four-month period, and the other one was like 36 hours for a four-month period. I'd like you to be able to, if you can explain that, why you're in and out so quickly, and you take such little time at the, at the jail, releasing prisoners. Could you tell me?
Well, the, we appear every day for the magistrations hearings in the mornings. And that, usually we do those magistrations hearings 8 o'clock in the morning. We go through them seven days a week. Then on occasions, we will go back, at least I go back, I don't know, but it's also, we'll go back, you know, during the day. We've had, sometimes we have individuals with medical complications that are in custody. We get called back. Sometimes we, we get called by attorneys that want to do a magistration. One of the clients, I, I go back on occasions in the afternoons to do them. I don't keep a record of the number of hours, but we're there and available most of the time, Commissioner.
I guess, I guess the issue is, if the timesheets show, maybe you need to get a copy of the timesheets, and we can go over this. If we can't finish it today, we'll go over it at the next, next meeting. But it shows that you, that one of you worked a total of 45 hours in a four-month period, and the other one worked 36 hours. Now, if that's not true, then I got the wrong information, but...
Well, I'd love to work, I'd love to look at the, the worksheets. I'd be glad to come at the next, to the next meeting, you know, and let me look at them. I'd be glad to explain them to you.
Yeah, the reason is, I guess it's a lot of money that you're getting paid for very few hours. If you figure the hourly rate it works about, if it's based on those exact hours, if that's correct, that's like $350 an hour that we're paying, you know, for the magistrations part, point of our, now, that, that sounds ridiculous now. So there's got to be an explanation, I'm sure.
Okay, I mean, I'd like to look at the hours, Commissioner, because I know that if what's included, whether, you know, if they also include the hours, we go back during the day, because we go on occasions, we do, I do go back. Sometimes I'll do arrangements twice a day, and that's just once in the morning, you know, and I'd like to look at the, the sheets.
And I did see that sometimes magistrate one will work like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, then magistrate two will work Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Do you alternate?
We alternate weeks. We do, we alternate weeks. We start from Monday through Sunday, and then we'll, then, you know, flip over week per week. And woke up, if one of us is in trial, or something like that nature, we'll call each other, and that person will appear for magistrations.
I guess, I guess my concern is, when we're looking at the budget, the total amount of money spent, we want to make sure we're getting, you know, our bang for our buck. So I think we need to get you the hours, the hours actually, what it shows, so you can, so we can have a legitimate argument, I guess, or a debate about...
It's a good discussion.
Okay.
I don't believe in arguments.
Okay, no, no, I'd rather do that.
One of the things you need to understand, Commissioner, though, is that, you know, this is, it's beyond just the time involved in going in. I mean, there is, you know, we're tethered here, one week apiece. We go in twice on Thursdays to do habeas's, and we're on an as-needed basis. We're there, if it takes us 30 minutes, if it takes us an hour, if it takes us two hours, whatever it takes, we're there to complete the job. Now, it's, it's kind of a damned if you do, damned if you don't deal. In, in the past, when I first started there, there was complaints that the judges were, had been historically taking way too long, and we were tying up the jail. We, we've heard from the sheriff that we tie up the jail, and that they can't move prisoners, and this, that, and the other thing. So historically, there was a complaint that we were there too long. Well, I mean, I believe in efficiency to the nth degree. I do that in my practice. I do it everywhere I go. So we've tried to become a model of efficiency there, and so now we're kind of damned for that as well. I mean, we have to come in on Saturdays, Sundays, we have to come in on the weekends. It means that we don't get to go out of town. I don't get to go do the fishing and stuff when it's my week, and that's fine. I mean, I accepted it, and I'm not complaining. But there's a lot more that goes into it than just showing up, and what the few minutes that are logged, or the hour, or whatever that's logged in the timesheet. And I just want you to appreciate that.
No, and I do.
And, and, and I'm sorry, and I haven't heard one single complaint from any of those people over there. In fact, I've left my door open, and I've asked them if there's, it's, I'm doing things my way. Judge Sines, Mr. Sines did his things his way, Judge Edelstein did things her way. We all do things different. And I've asked them if there's something else that you need from me more, if there's something less that you need from me, if you need from me to change something, I'm willing to sit down. And not one of those people have ever asked me to do anything that I've, or Mr. Padilla, that I'm aware of, that we've ever said no to. So I appreciate the, the situation, but you just need to understand, there's a lot more to it than just the, the actual time that goes in.
And I understand, I guess my biggest concern is, I have a fiduciary responsibility to basically look at every department, how they operate, if, you know, do we have duplication of efforts? Do we have duplication of people doing the same job? And in this particular case, it just kind of jumped out when I saw the amount of hours. Again, I need to get you a copy of that, of hours worked versus, versus amount paid. And, and my first thought was, well, we have, we have, and I know the real issue is not the magistrations, it's the habeas, because you have to be an attorney to do habeas. And I, I said, I know we have one JP that's, that can do habeas at the courthouse now, and we have one in the bullpen, our 2.3 judge that we have, that we've appointed, but not, we've appointed him, but not assigned him anywhere yet, who is also an attorney, who could also do the habeas hearings. And they're actually, he's actually on payroll, even though he's not drawing a check, he's already fixed, he's already fixed into our budget. So we consider that an expense, even though we haven't paid him a dime yet.
Well, we serve at your pleasure, obviously. We serve at the pleasure of the Board of Judges, so whatever you all feel is appropriate is best. But I believe that the program that you are at least looking at has been tried before. And if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Sanchez was a JP when, in fact, the JPs were asked to do this, and there was consistent trouble getting the JPs there, you know, especially on the weekends and during holidays. And so the reason that this was put into place is that you're not going to get lawyers to do this job for very, very little money, just simply because of the issues that I've given you, the fact that we're tethered on Saturdays and Sundays when everybody else is enjoying themselves. I've got to make myself available to go to the jail at any given time. And I invite you, and I invite the rest of the Commissioner and the judge to talk with Janie Therbino down there, to talk to any of those people to see, is it true? Do they really make themselves available? Do they come in when, when they're asked to come in? And I invite you to do that. I think you should. And, and I, I think that the, the scheme that you're, that you're trying to go to has been tried. And honestly, I don't remember whether you were Commissioner when that was in place or not.
No, I was not, and I don't, I take, it's not a scheme, it's just a thought.
I, I didn't mean that in the negative connotation. The, the arrangement, I guess, that you were trying, I didn't mean that negative.
I guess my biggest, my biggest concern, and, and until you have copies of the hours, we really can't talk too much more. I just wanted to make you be aware of the time spent versus the money we're spending. That's, as a Commissioner, that's my job to do that.
Let me throw this in there. I don't think it'd be appropriate to, to discuss the time, the hours, the clocking in, checking in at a regular meeting, for, just for the reason because of, of the time constraint. We have one or two more meetings left before we adopt the budget. So I just, I think if you all need to meet, Commissioner, I think if you and maybe Commissioner Benavides, just for the sake of convenience that you're here, want to meet with them and go over this, I, I think that'd be more appropriate than bring something back to us at the next meeting versus talking about this, spending an hour of time discussing this, this particular issue. There's no need to, to be doing that. So I would recommend that, that, that one of you all, or both of y'all, sit down with Commissioner Hernandez and whomever, and maybe with, with our administrator or somebody, whomever, and sit down and kind of talk about this, because there might be some misinformation there. I don't know. I, I got the same information, and, but it's kind of hard to, you know, to dissect it.
There are a couple.
Okay, and let's, let's, let's do that. Okay.
Judge Garcia called me. Judge Garcia already called me about this? Yeah, yeah, yes.
I haven't had a single call over.
Okay. We'll get them the hours, Judge.
Why don't we do that?
I will, I'm going to be gone the rest of the week, but Monday, I'll call one of y'all, or both of y'all to come in. We can sit down and talk.
Why don't we do that? So let's, let's kind of...
Okay, just, yeah.
Because, you know, the officers are constantly going to my house for search warrants and, and, you know, and...
But not looking for you, right?
Well, not for me. I haven't worn the cuffs yet, not yet.
Not yet.
No, but, but I'm saying, I want to make sure that, that's why I want to see the hourly's, because that's included on there, because they, they show up in my house for me to sign search warrants and arrest warrants, you know.
It's like, it's like being on a retainer, you know? I mean, sometimes you, you know...
On call, all the time.
On call, and sometimes you don't. So let's do that, and then, yeah, and then, then bring it back to us for, you know, for, I think that the, the JP 2-3 is a lot easier to fix, if we're going to fix something in that arena. And, and, but on this one, let's just kind of hold off.
Commissioner Hernandez, also, just FYI, even though we have two attorney JPs, legally they can't do habeas's. The only reason these gentlemen can do habeas's is because the statute permits their positions to do habeas's. But just because the attorney JPs are attorneys doesn't give them the ability to do habeas's, just FYI.
The legal authority.
Can they do it with the permission of the district judges?
No.
Not at all?
You have to have a statute passed, and I don't know that the state's going to pass a statute that affects statewide JPs. I mean, this was a, a statute that was specifically enabled to give two positions in Cameron County the ability to hear the habeas. And really, I think, more than anything, this is a space issue, it's what you brought up, Judge, because at the last meeting, Mr. Leinert was here, and one of the things that they wanted to do was move the habeas hearings to the courthouse instead of having them to jail, because it takes up a lot of personnel and a lot of time. And those hour numbers that we were given, if they're going to consider how long it takes to do habeas's, I think those numbers are off. So I think you do need to look at the, the times, because they just, it doesn't seem like they're, they would be accurate as long as it takes to do habeas's over there.
Well, Pete, and that's a good case in point, again, something that they've asked us in the past to do habeas's here. That was kicked around when the jail was an issue, and we've been before you all before on this issue. I said, fine, let's do it here. I mean, it doesn't seem efficient, because we have to now transport, but apparently the sheriff thinks it is. So we're happy to do that. And again, I, yeah, we do need to look at the hours, but I don't really think that that's the central issue here. Whatever the hours bear out, you know, what the hours are going to bear out, but there's a lot more, and it's just like the judge said, it's the being on retainer, being available at any given time.
Bottom line, getting it done.
Correct.
Well, bottom line, getting it done, and, you know, the complaints that I know I've had in the past from the Sheriff's Department was space.
Yes, sir.
And they wanted you to, basically there for a while, you were taking over a certain area that they needed.
We still are.
And, and you're utilizing it. We've made some provisions to build.
Yes, sir.
Added space to accommodate the process.
Yes, sir.
The process has been working.
Yes, sir.
I have not, maybe people don't complain to me, I don't know, but I have not had one single complaint on any magistrations issue that has come up in the last couple of years. Not one.
And again, and thank you, and I invite anybody that has an issue, just because it's my way doesn't mean it's the right way. I'm willing to sit down with anybody and say, we would like for you to do things a little differently. little differently, or we want more of this or less of that.
Let me, let me just add one, I'm, I'm going to leave now, but let me add one more person that you may want to consider asking to attend, that's somebody from the sheriff's office. Be it Janie, or be it the chief, or be it the sheriff, but somebody, you know, because...
Included in the conversation with...
Uh, you know, I think so, because a lot of times people will complain behind closed doors, but then when the nut-cutting comes, everybody, you know, everybody runs and doesn't want to face up to it. So if this is a legitimate concern, then have the people that are, that are expressing concerns be there to address them. That's simple, okay? So y'all, excuse me.
I'll get with you, I'll get with you on Monday. Thank you.
I have no more on the budget. We have no more on the budget. Thank you, Miguel.
Do you have anything else, Javier? On the budget?
Uh, no, other than, I was wondering if y'all were going to make some sort of decisions on any of the issues?
I don't think so. I don't think so. Unless, unless you're all ready to make some decisions now, if not, let me hear a motion to acknowledge...
You want to approve that thousand-dollar increase?
Well, that's already up at the top.
Well, it's on the top, but it hasn't been officially, y'all haven't taken action on it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to, to...
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Benavides to approve the one-thousand-dollar raise for all county employees?
Well, okay.
And elected officials, with, with, with the caveat of getting the, trying to work with the sheriff's office on that salary matrix?
My, my motion is to approve a thousand dollars per employee county-wide.
Okay, that's a motion?
That's my motion.
In a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, carries.
Anything else, Javier?
Does that help, Javier?
Yes, it helps.
No, it really doesn't.
So that, that narrows the gap on how much we have left to spend, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's there, but it, that way I can key that in already.
So do we need to also move right now on the approval of the, uh, increase of tolls at the bridge? Is this a time?
If that's something, and just to remind the court, uh, I, I need final direction from y'all by next week, because the following week, you just adopt the budget and set the tax rate. So I need all the final changes by next week's meeting, so I can prepare the document for y'all to approve.
So we really need to work this out now.
Mm-hmm.
What do you, was there any way you want to do about the, uh, bridge toll increases? Anybody want to have a suggestion, or you want to wait?
You know, the only, the only suggestion I would have, you know, that, that I would support in any way, shape, or form, would be the auto increase. I would not support commercial increase or pedestrian increase. I just think that, uh, you know, commercial, you know, we're trying to attract more business to our bridge system. We've got an expansion project going on that hopefully would bring more in the near future. Uh, and, you know, I don't think we need to be equal to, you know, I mean, it's not...
Well, right now, they're, they're beating us in volume, and that's because we're cheaper than they are.
Right.
If we go equal to them, I don't think that we're going to gain any more business.
I don't think so.
Um, I, I think that's more of a, uh, an issue of what's going on with DPS and, and the enforcement.
And I understand that with some meetings that have been fruitful in that regard.
Yes, there have.
So, you know, I mean, let's not, I mean, we, we, I think we can, we can look at, I, I will look at auto, that's it.
Commissioner?
Same.
I mean, pedestrian is downtown business, you know?
Right now, our trucks are spending whatever amount of gas mileage to go all the way to far to avoid the DPS. Okay, so, I mean, ultimately, we're going to have to go up. Hopefully, this is going to help alleviate the DPS problem and the, uh, and the truck industry. But at the end of the day, we, we still need to be equal to them. We, we, this county lowered the rates to help out the truckers. And I think it's time that we need to move up. That's my opinion. Of course, you know, it's whatever the court wishes to do.
Well, we can, we can pass, uh, and we just, just talk about one, we still have next week. So it's, can I entertain a motion to raise the auto, auto pedestrian, I mean, the auto rate?
Does it serve any purpose for you to do one and not all three? In regards to making a decision, yes?
Well, depending on what else y'all want to do.
Yeah, so we can still, we can do part of it now, part of it next week, yes or no?
Well, at least you would know what kind of money would you...
Yes, exactly.
You know, because I don't have a problem moving to approve the auto increase.
Is that, you going to make a motion to that?
Uh, move to do that.
Have a motion, Commissioner Garza?
I'll second it.
Have a motion second, any discussion?
I, is Pete here, did he leave?
He took off.
He took off. They're gone.
On the, on the auto, what has the trend been?
The...
On the decrease?
I can't, it's gone up.
Yeah, the, the trend will fluctuate. Um, I know that overall, the, the toll revenues have decreased by three percent this year, up through July, they had decreased three percent in total. Uh, the, the, the ones that have been increasing a bit are the commercial.
Yeah, I mean, over the last few years, the commercial traffic has been the one that's increasing relative to the economic conditions. But our, our pedestrian traffic, you know, has gone slightly down, not, not by much, but, you know, it's because of different issues that are going on. I think this year stayed relatively flat, so...
It's plateaued?
Yeah.
Because I know we had been decreasing and decreasing.
Yes, and these figures that you see here, by increasing the toll rates, are at a full one-hundred percent.
You have to roll that back a little bit?
Yes, I'm gonna, I will...
What would you suggest?
Like ninety percent?
Probably about ninety percent.
Okay, then we'll book it at ninety percent, and that, and we'll, we'll approve that, based on your recommendation of that.
Well, what I'm going to do is I'm going to look at the historical trend and see where that is and where we are today.
Okay.
And, uh, but it, it will not be at a hundred percent certification.
That's fine. Okay, I have a motion second to approve the auto rate at the bridges. All in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
By, by twenty-five cents?
Twenty-five cents.
Yes, by the recommendation on the...
What else?
So where does that put us now?
It depends what it's booked.
Um, well, it all depends on the actual number.
Can you give us a more or less figure, Martha?
About four-seventy-five, ninety percent.
Probably about five-hundred thousand, about four-hundred sixty thousand and more.
So let's use the four-fifty as a...
Benchmark.
As a, as a work number, and then if, if it goes up a little bit, then maybe we can get that extra dog catcher we need.
Yep.
We still have an issue with the sheriff deputies, the constables needing to be deputies at the courthouse area, environmental health, the auditor, and the tax assessor for the, uh, Los Fresnos branch. Any, any, any discussion on that?
I have a question for Mr. Sagire, is he here?
He's out of town. Jesse's here.
Mr. Garcia, um, I know, um, I know this court had given extra, I believe, an extra slot for, um, to enable someone to go out and check and inspect all the machines, the maquinitas and all this stuff.
Correct.
What is that person doing now?
They're still doing the same thing. We still have the compliance officer going out and verifying that the machines do have the permits and that the businesses do have the licenses.
But there's no more, there's no more eight-liners.
Well, that is as duty as, as, as it is right now, man.
Okay, well, I would think that, that we, he would be able to utilize that person to, to man at least part-time the window at, and Los Fresnos. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the court thinks, but, um, that's my thought on it.
That's a good point, that's a good point. We'll look at it, Jesse. Yeah, we're, we won't have, make a decision by the next, next Thursday.
Okay.
But it's still, it's still open for consideration.
Yeah.
Okay, sir.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things, Jesse, before you leave, that, on, on that particular item, is I think that we've invested in, in that facility there, you know, the county put a new building together and invested in drive-throughs and all for that particular area. But I think that, on, you know, we need a commitment, we're not doing the collections, or your office is not doing the collections for the school district in Los Fresnos, is that correct?
That's correct.
You know, I would like...
We do the city.
You do the city.
We do the city.
And it gives a convenience to the residents of that city. Right now, people that, that live in the Los Fresnos Independent School District have to go to Harlingen to pay taxes.
Correct.
But they can pay their city taxes in the local office. And I think that we should give the, uh, school district a call, and if we were to get that account, that would more than cover a position there for us to open the drive-throughs and have the convenience for the community to not have to drive to Harlingen to pay the taxes. So I, I think that, you know, we, we ought to work with it and, and maybe not necessarily, you know, I, definitely, I would like to fill the position, but, you know, we ought to hold back until maybe we get a commitment from the school district to allow the county tax office to be responsible for collecting taxes, and then that would allow us the funding of that particular position. And it's all a convenience to the community at the end of the day. Because I know that, I was visiting with David Garcia, for example, he lives in Brownsville, in the city of Brownsville, but his home is inside the Los Fresno School District, and he's got to, you know, you got to go to Harlingen to pay taxes for Los Fresnos, which makes absolutely no sense.
Correct, correct.
So, you know, I don't know, we should, maybe that position at least hold off a little bit.
Yeah, and we can't, again, we're, right today, we're just kind of talking about it...
I know Tony wants it, he wants to provide the convenience, but you know what?
Yeah, I, I think...
There's a price for convenience.
I think what Mr. Sagire has, has mentioned before is that unless we get that other individual, we're not going to be able to operate the, the drive-through.
Right.
And, and it's a shame that, you know, we have it and we can't use it. I know he's planning to approach the Los Fresno School District in an attempt to, to try to see if we can get their collection, but, but there again, it's, you know, it's up in the air whether they would want to come with the county or not. It doesn't make sense for them not to, but in the past, when we've approached them...
That would be their decision, you know, but they can either get off at Whataburger and go in, or they can go through the driveway and that convenience is offered. With us, you know, I mean, we are, I know that office is getting busier as we've gone on, but, uh, you know, if, if we need to keep the drive-in closed until we can afford to fund it, you know, through revenues generated from that particular account, you know, we need to, you know, we got to be responsible to some extent.
Yeah, I, I understand. The only thing, you know, that Mr. Sagire has mentioned is that, you know, right now with, with, you know, with our staffing situation, and I know you brought up the compliance officer and, and so forth, we do have him do other duties, but, you know, basically, he's out enforcing that, and it's not only the eight-liners that get the permits, you know, it's pool halls and any, any, any grocery, not grocery store, but restaurant or, uh, any place where they have machines of any kind, not necessarily the eight-liner machines. Uh, we also have him do some TABC work when, when, when we send out letters for TABC to, uh, you know, pay their fees or liquor fees, because whoever has a liquor license has to pay one-half of whatever they pay to the state or the county. And sometimes some of these individuals don't pay us, so we need to send him out and, and try to collect and so forth and so on. We do find other things for him to do, but the main responsibility that that individual has is compliance. And, you know, I know that it would be very difficult for Mr. Sagire to send him to, to Los Fresnos, but that's something that you would have to discuss with him.
Sure.
See if he's agreeable to that. But, but at this point, the one thing that, you know, he wanted me to stress was that if we don't get the individual, it's going to be very difficult for us, almost impossible for us to open that...
Yeah, and I don't want this to be opened unless we, I mean, unless we get that other account.
Sure. And the position that we're asking for is at the very low end of the, of the salary schedule that we have for all our county clerk positions, which is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
I, I think the biggest problem is that we have, uh, not a lot of money left over in so many, we need sheriff deputies, we need constables, the auditor needs people, uh, you need people, uh, the environmental health, all these issues are very important to us.
I understand, sir.
And, and we have to balance it, but we will certainly look at it, and by next, next Thursday, you'll have a, we'll give you a decision.
And, and like I said, we are planning to, to contact the Los Fresno School District in an attempt to try to collect their taxes, but there again, it, it won't happen this year. If we were to bring them on board, we couldn't bring them on board this year. Uh, it would have to be next year sometime, you know? Last year, we brought in five districts all at once. And, you know, this year, you know, it's too late in the year for, for us to bring any other, any other taxing jurisdiction, so that we could successfully balance their, their taxes and, and their delinquent taxes and be able to send our tax bills out in October. We, we don't want to jeopardize that portion of our responsibility.
Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Jesse.
Yes, sir.
I was, uh, wondering on the, uh, the other positions that had been tentatively approved for the county clerk, veterans, and magistrates, do you want to take official action on that, or you want to wait on those until next week?
I would like to take official action on, on that. Um, will you entertain a motion at this point, or I don't know?
Which ones?
On the top ones that we had decided on.
The county clerk?
Mm-hmm, the veterans, the magistrates, yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
How about the legal fees?
Well, that, we're going to have to...
Okay.
How about MHMR?
That'd be...
How about the county airport? We need to fund that. So just do all of those on the top?
On the top, yes.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Benavides, a second by Commissioner Garza, all in favor, somebody by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
That way you get that piece out.
Yeah, that's, that's done.
Okay.
Okay, let's see what else. Well, we don't have too much money left to, to do anything else.
Well, why don't we wait for an accounting and then next, pretty much?
Excuse me, uh, there's been a recommendation that, that the court in the motion identify what they are approving at this time specifically.
Uh, two county clerk positions, one veteran office position, one extra help at the magistrates, legal fees of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, MHMR, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and operational transfer to the county airport of forty-three thousand dollars.
Thank you, thank you.
So where does that put us, Javier?
Well, uh, we had the ninety, which was the ninety-eight thousand seventy, seven ninety-seven, uh, plus twenty-seven thousand dollars from the state controllers, uh, and then-
Tentatively. Four hundred and fifty for the toll rate increase.
So it'd be about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Does the twenty-seven thousand, that, that was not included in the judge's increase?
No, we just, uh, learned about that, uh-
We, we confirmed it yesterday, so.
So we had already put the increase in?
For, for the, uh, county court of law judges, the fifteen thousand dollars. What, what y'all still need to take action on is-
The three thousand, right?
Correct.
Three thousand is-
Yeah, you approved a thousand dollars across the board for all county employees, so I, I would assume that would include all the judges also.
Yes.
Uh, but there was the request by the district judges to get the three thousand to go to the max, and so y'all would still have to consider, uh, or not the addition of-
So it's actually two thousand.
Two thousand more.
Correct. And that would also apply to the county court of law judges if you were to approve that.
So it'd increase them by one thousand?
Based on what you, uh, approved, they were already increased by a thousand dollars.
Right, no, but it would be one thousand more because they-
Two thousand.
No, they have to be, get paid a thousand less?
But they're already a thousand dollars less. So if you bump up, yeah, the district judges, then you have to bump up the county court by the same amount.
I mean, there's really no way not to do it.
I move to approve.
By two thousand, Commissioner?
By two thousand, based on the fact that they're, they would be getting a thousand dollars, so that would be the, the total, three thousand, yes.
I have a, a motion by Commissioner Benavides.
And would, would include all of them, right?
All county court of law and district judges.
With the caveat that they're gonna help us empty the jails, right?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Second.
And the ankle monitoring and a couple of other issues we talked about. I have a motion and a second, all in favor, anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And work like in July and December?
I hope so.
Okay.
Commissioner, uh, Sanchez, did you abstain?
I'll abstain on that one. It's y'all three voting.
Three, one abstention. That takes care of that. Okay, now, how much money do we have left? Javier?
Um, seventy-five, less the forty?
Five forty-eight.
Can we wait on that, you know, till the next week?
Well, we can, we can. The only other issue that I think is very, very important to this commission, to us, is the five deputies, which is two hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and forty dollars that we have to replace.
Well-
So how much do we have left?
Wait till next week?
Five hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, that's tentative because we're, we're working with a four hundred and fifty thousand estimate at this time for the toll revenue.
I'd rather have a good estimate and then work on that, yeah?
It's up to you.
I mean, that, that makes it too easy for Javier, he would do everything today.
It makes your life a lot simpler.
If three officials are gonna grieve or-
That, that's all we received so far, are the judge's office.
How much more time do they have?
Tomorrow.
Till tomorrow?
Because it all depends when they actually receive the notice.
Okay.
Yeah, they have five days from when they receive the notice.
If they received it, right?
Yeah, they, yeah, they signed when they received it.
I didn't.
No?
They just gave it to me and I kept it.
No.
But I said I wasn't gonna grieve, so don't worry.
Yeah, so we have until tomorrow.
I'll add, uh, one more, one more particular issue was the, uh, environmental health, the animal control person, to balance out two for the north side of the county and two for the south.
That I think we need to do.
Yes, we do.
But did we have a total number on vehicle and all that? Because this is just salary.
That's just salary. Uh, depending on, I know, Peter, sir, but the vehicle itself would be, uh, if y'all were to approve it, the, uh, on the equipment list, which will be going out, uh, in October.
Okay.
There's vehicles parked out there that are not used.
The M and O and all that, I mean-
Yeah, that would be additional-
Gas.
Fuel and insurance.
For now, before the, once we hire somebody, we have to put them to training, so they have to be with another ACO, so that would actually buy us time to, once we get into the equipment list and see if that can happen. But for now, yeah, we do need to position, get them certified and so on.
Well, we're gonna have to put aside a certain amount for gas and maintenance operation of the vehicle, so that's gonna have to be factored in here, we're not just looking at a salary.
Yeah, M and O would probably be about three or four thousand dollars.
Okay.
That would kinda, off the top of my head, I'd estimate.
I need a motion on environmental health.
So?
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. That's for the animal control officer.
Right.
The only other issue that I have right now is, is actually gonna be the sheriff's office, and if you wanna wait, we can let that go till next Thursday, but I think it's very important that we add those deputies.
What the final numbers are gonna be.
Know what the hard numbers are?
Right now, approximately five hundred and fourteen thousand.
With that, after subtracting that?
Yeah, environmental control.
Give us good numbers.
Now, now, on these sheriff deputies, again, there's gonna be M and O on their vehicles and equipment, right?
Um, yes. Well, the, the, the actual vehicles, uh, for the ones that they're losing through the grant, they already have vehicles.
Do we get to keep those vehicles, or is it a grant?
Yeah, they're not losing the, the vehicles or the M and O, they're only losing the manpower to drive them.
We still have the vehicles.
Okay.
Vehicles, we're, we're good on vehicles, we just need the manpower.
You wanna wait, we can wait till next week, as long as, you know, he's, give him a little hope.
Well, hope is-
Okay, hope is good.
Having a little bit of money there and making sure we-
It's ten, it's five from the grant and five that were being requested separately.
The ones we're talking about.
Right now, is the five that we would want to replace-
These are the replacement off, these are, yeah.
That were lost through the grant?
These are the ones that are gonna be, to replace the grant, uh, uh, employees that we're losing, September thirtieth, correct?
We're losing five.
Yeah. Do these officers, what do they do? Are they patrol?
They're out on patrol and they help supplement, because of these officers, we're able, that's how we were able to establish our K-9 division.
Mm-hmm.
So we lose those five officers, we're gonna have to bring back the K-9 officers back into the field. You know, right now, they're doing real, real good, you know, hitting certain places, we have them at the bridges, and we have a currency, uh, dogs, we have, uh, an explosives ammunition dog that catches, uh, vehicles, you know, loaded with weapons and stuff like that, and it's a great asset to the department.
Sure.
And that's what, what we're, we're hoping, not to lose these five officers so that we can continue with our K-9 division, uh, which are part of our narcotics division.
I, uh, hope at some point you bring back the PAW program. We need that, you know, we have a lot of calls from people that, uh, thought that was a very successful program, the prisoners and work program.
Extremely successful program.
Very successful, so, uh-
That's not Mike-
We'll talk to the sheriff about, uh-
That's Mike Leonard's, uh, division over there.
We'll, we'll, we'll call Gus.
Yeah.
But there's, that's, I mean, it's his division, but it's the same dollars at the end of the day.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that, you know, I would like, I know that program had been extremely successful, at least in, in the precinct that I represent, in doing a lot of work for us.
Sure, mine too.
They, they have, you know, I mean, it was great. It was, it was great to see, you know, and it gave people a different perspective of-
Absolutely, I totally agree with you.
Of our prisoner system.
Absolutely.
So I think we need to look at some of those possibilities.
Sure.
Whatever y'all can do, first, Commissioner, even just saving those five positions, that would be a, you know, we can still continue to operate the way we're operating now, but we, it's just very imperative that we do not lose those five positions. Even if that's all you can do, those five positions, that, that's a great help for us. We can keep going the way we're going right now.
Gentlemen, ladies, you wanna, we'll wait, we'll let it go till-
Rather wait?
All right, not a problem.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Javier?
Um, I don't have anything else for the, for the general fund, uh, at this point, if you all wanna wait on the, on the rest of the items.
Okay. We had a, an issue, we were gonna talk about the constables, but I still don't have the figures. I was asking for the number of warrants issued by each JP. Did you ever, were you able to get those numbers yet?
Um, no.
The last fiscal year? Can you get them by next Thursday?
The, I think one of the issues that we're having, uh, from, from our office as far as extracting that information is, um, the way the information's being entered into the Odyssey system, and then for, for the individual from our office to, to extract it, um, he, he doesn't feel comfortable that the numbers that he would get out of there are gonna be accurate.
Would the JP, wouldn't the JPs know what the number of warrants that they've issued in the last fiscal year? They should have a, some kind of record, wouldn't you think?
We approve them.
I would think so.
Yeah, we approve them.
We have them.
Yeah, I don't have them with me, I s, if they could pull out their old reports, maybe they'd give me a total, a more, look, I don't wanna make arbitrary decisions without info, with the right information. It's kinda like what happened with the, with the, uh, magistrates right now. I wanna make sure everybody has all the information before we make decisions.
Okay.
So, go ahead, Michael.
We'll take a, a look at it and see what, if any of the JP officers can extrapolate that information, uh, and if we can, we should be able to get it out to you by Thursday. It just-
That'd be great.
At the first, uh, you know, recommendation to pull that data, we were not able to, and, uh, and we were not comfortable with the data being accurate at all.
Maybe you should just request it from them, it shouldn't be your job, I know, it should be, you know, they should be able to provide that to you without you having to look it up yourself.
And maybe you, what you can do is go back to, instead of using Odyssey, use the net data and the, um, Easy Justice and maybe do half a year.
Up to that point, yeah.
Uh, because those numbers are in there, you should be able to access those easier if they haven't all converted over into Odyssey.
I'm not sure that we still have access to it, but the, the data has all been integrated into Odyssey.
So we don't have access to the old system?
I don't believe so, that, uh, legal, civil.
Wouldn't it go through the end of August?
The, the, the JP should have their own records, I mean, I'm sure-
Or through the end of September?
Each office has records from the past month.
The, the contract was terminated with civil, I mean, with Easy Justice and that data as of, uh, June the tenth, I believe.
But didn't we have to have, I mean, weren't we paying them to have access for this last quarter?
I do not believe so.
We didn't pay them?
I think we, once they transferred the information-
It was, it was transferred and-
Cause, cause I know annually, they'll charge us, this is the fee to-
Right, but they were, they were given their thirty-day, uh, cancellation notice.
So did we get money back for a pro rata?
Well, for net, net data, we weren't paying, uh, for service, they were providing that program for free because they were doing the collections. So we were never paying net data, any kind of annual maintenance, the only one we were paying was-
Easy Justice. Well, maybe we could at least get that information. I mean, don't we still use them for our tax office?
Yeah.
Maybe they'll work with, I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to give us a number.
Well, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Legal seems to think that, that, uh, we probably wouldn't have a problem with, uh, Easy Justice. I don't know about net data.
Okay, anything else, Javier?
Um, not with the general fund. I, I, I just wanted to, to mention on, on the, uh, the park system, um, we're still working with them, uh, we had it, uh, at, at balanced, uh, amount, um, but then, of course, uh, just found out about the anticipated legal fees for, for next fiscal year, um, which was in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're going back and looking at the, all the concession agreements, uh, and seeing if there's additional revenues there. Um, but even what we're kinda anticipating, uh, it looks like they're still gonna be short, uh, revenues to expenditures, um, and so we'll have those finalized for, for next week, and so, um, we'll kinda need direction from the court on, on, uh, what y'all wanna do with, with, uh, as far as the park systems budget is concerned.
Okay.
Balance it.
That it?
At this point, yes, unless y'all have any other direction or discussion.
Any other questions? I need a motion to acknowledge the report.
So move.
A motion, second, all in favor?
One quick question, um, on the magistrate court, does that include the two positions that are currently working in the other JP courts?
Well, they're under the JP two dash three.
Right, but right now, they're working-
There, there's three, uh, positions, there's two in, I forget which one of the JP, all three of them are working at Brownsville.
Two and two point two and one, two point one.
Right.
Right, but this number here, the one seventy, is that inclusive of those positions?
Not the ma, no, not the magistrate courts, they're under JP two dash three. The, the magistrate has the two magistrates-
Oh, I'm sorry, under two dash three?
Yes, all those positions are here. There's, they're still, under that budget, under that salary schedule, they're just temporarily assigned, uh, to those JP courts.
So if we eliminate that like the judge wants to, three people lose their job?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, one of those spots is vacant, there's a vacancy in one, in two point three, there's one vacancy right now.
Okay.
Uh, there's one in one right now between the two judges.
Okay.
Because one went back to, um, La Feria.
Oh, just travel?
Remember, I asked you about the-
Oh, Berta went back, okay.
Yeah, she went back.
Okay, so two people. All right.
Okay, I have a motion, second, to acknowledge the report, all in favor, anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item E.
Oh, would you do the approval?
The approval of the minutes, uh, item C, August thirteenth, regular meeting and August, both August first, special meeting, one regular meeting, one special meeting. Anybody read-
Move the table.
Have a motion, have a motion, second, to table, all in favor, anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, consideration approval of waiver for government code chapter fifty-two, section fifty-two, uh, point zero five one, compensation and expense.
That is, uh, just, uh, a waiver to, uh, to the, uh, to the statute that, uh, requires the adoption, the setting of the salaries for the court reporters to be, to be presented to commissioners' court prior to, by September first. Uh, since the court had not officially taken any action on what the compensation increase was going to be to, to county employees, uh, the district judges have, have not, have not met to, to set the salaries for the court reporters, so it is a waiver to, to that requirement.
Well, I guess one of the other questions, when we did the thousand dollar across the board, did that include the court reporters and the assistant auditors?
Yes.
Uh, yes, now, the judges still set the salaries, but there has been no indication from, that I know of, uh, to increase any salary at any other amount.
Right, so, I mean, so they're not asking-
It did include the court reporters, yes, and from, from my understanding, the auditor's office as well.
Okay, so this, does this waiver include both, or?
This is only for the court reporters.
Okay, and we don't need one for the auditors?
The, the statute only requires the court reporters.
The court reporter, okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve this item, all in favor, anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F, consideration direction regarding implementation, utilization? I'm sorry?
What is that?
Yes, we can, which presentation is that one?
The Sprint. The gentleman from Sprint are here.
Okay, where's, which number is that one, please? The presentation?
It's under presentation.
Okay, never mind, we'll skip.
Four A.
G, consideration and authorization to utilize the service of Roy Adias temporarily to assist in the daily Cameron County autopsy operation.
Judge, pretend commissioners, um, we have, uh, the individual that works at the autopsy department at Valley Baptist is gonna be out for a few weeks. Um, in the past, a few, a few years ago, we, we contracted with an individual to come in and temporarily help with the autopsies. Um, we have identified an individual that works at Valley Baptist and he's willing to work, and the doctor has, uh, spoken to him and is in agreement. This individual would work for a few weeks, uh, probably no more than fifteen days. Right now, we're scheduled for two weeks at about, at, not at about, but at two hundred dollars a day. Um, and so we re-
Which is about half of what we paid the last time, right?
Uh, yes, so we recommend, uh, this approval.
Do we have a funding source?
Uh, contract services.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve this item, all in favor, anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Doby, we have H and I, you show those, uh, as a, the judge asked those to be tabled?
Yeah.
Yeah. H and I, Joe, is that yours? Yeah, the judge has asked both of those items to be tabled. He wants to be here for the presentation.
Move the table.
All in favor, I mean, need a second?
Did, did, did you have someone here to make that presentation from out of town?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry? Is there someone here from out of town to make that presentation? Okay.
Have a motion? To table?
H and I.
H and I.
Yes, sir. Next week?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
That's fine.
Sure. Sure you can.
The last legislative session, the House and Senate passed unanimously, House Bill fifteen thirteen and Senate Bill five eighty-nine, where to increase our archival fee from five dollars to ten dollars for the purpose of saving our historical books. Couple of weeks ago, you folks, when we presented the fee schedule, approved the increase and we put a six-year plan. Here with me today is my chief deputy, Leti Perez, my office manager, and the courtside, Sandra Sanchez, the vault manager, Elida Garza, and the archival and records manager, Lucina Rosa Baum out of San Benito. You've got two packets, and the front page is the finished product, and following that are the conditions some of our books are in. And that's why we put this six-year plan. The fee will only last six years, so we're starting to, we're going to start collecting the fee starting in September. So the purpose of the fee is to save the history of Cameron County. We've done most of our records from nineteen twenty-seven up to day one, up to yesterday, and this six-year plan will take us from nineteen twenty-six to day one.
Which is, what, eighteen something?
Eighteen forty-eight. Eighteen forty-eight. We've already done all the brands, all the Banco books, and the next plan is to finish the projects we started, and it goes back to eighteen forty-eight to nineteen twenty-six. State of Texas thinks it's important that we save our history, that's why it passed unanimously in the House and Senate. I don't know if you have any questions? If you do, I'll be more than glad to try to answer them. What I'd like for you to do is, when the judge is here, to get it passed, so we can get it done and preserve our history in Cameron County.
Thank you, Joe.
So all those, excuse me.
This is the finished product right there. Both books were falling apart.
Mr. Ribetta, so all the fees that you would be collecting would go towards the preservation?
Correct, preservation. Can't use it for anything else.
We've already approved that, right?
The fees, yes.
The fees.
The fees, yes.
So we're going to be collecting it. This is just proving your plan on how you're going to preserve.
The six-year plan.
It's an incredible job.
Now, in that book, are they inside plastic?
Yes.
And that's what preserves them longer than just binding something?
Correct.
It's like that judge from Houston when he came down.
Came in last week and did a presentation on the district clerk's operation.
Okay.
That book that Commissioner Ernie Hernandez is seeing and Commissioner Benavides, that book was falling apart before we got it done.
They're not deteriorated where they can't be?
They can still be preserved.
Are you microfishing this also? Everything is microfished already, or digitalized, or whatever it's called?
What we do, what they do with that, they take all the tape off, they straighten it out, and they put special solutions, and not only do they fix it this way, but they also microfilm it and scan it so that it can be retrieved at the courthouse. Here and in San Benito.
Yeah, so it's already, it's going to be digitalized also?
What's that, sir?
It's digitalized.
Yes.
Okay.
We were supposed to have a public hearing, but I'm going to, we're going to table it, even though you give us explanation, and that way she can bring it back next week when the judge is here and we'll have the public...
Why do we have the public hearing?
The public hearing and then the motion action to approve it, okay? Okay, thank you, Joe.
I won't be here next week.
I'm sure, you know, I don't know, but, you know, we know our judge, he probably is going to ask questions about fiscally, what are the dollars, how much you anticipate collecting, so I would have something, you know, just send it to us, because that's normal.
Dovia, if we posted a public hearing, don't we have to have it?
This packet that you've got, you've got all that information on how much we're going to collect?
I imagine, Joe, I'm just...
And how much we're going to spend?
Let me, let's go ahead and, I want to make a motion, ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion, open public hearing.
Have a motion, second, to open the public hearing? That way the public can make any comments they have to make.
In your packet, if there is the amount that we will be spending and what we are going to be collecting also, it's already there.
Okay.
Did they vote to open the public hearing?
Yeah, we already voted to, now make a motion to close the public hearing. We already voted.
When?
Oh, I made a motion, there's a second.
Motion, second, open the public hearing, I'm sorry.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to open public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're in a public hearing.
Anybody want to comment on the books? On the process? Constable Gomez gives it a thumbs up, for the record, we'll note that. And Sochi Lamas, thumbs up. Anyone else? Move to close public hearing?
Have a motion to close public hearing, have a second, have a... All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, I have a question for Dovia. Dovia, are we going to have to have another public hearing to do the item next week?
No.
Okay.
So all I need now is a motion to table?
Table, some of.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to table item aye, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all.
Well, I'm here, let me just make you a special invitation for September the third. We're having an official opening of the Hollingen Collection Office at nine AM in the morning. We'd like for as many of you to be there. We're getting great cooperation from the JP in La Feria, Trevio, from the JP...
Cano?
Cano. The only one that does not want to say anybody is Judge Gonzalez. She says she's having problems with the computer system or something like that, and she will not do anything until I think it's correct.
But the other judges are able to send you people and you're able to process everything, and they're using the same computer system?
Yeah. It's going well, right, Joe? That process is going well?
Yes, the collection part of it, it is.
I know they're busy in San Benito.
And San Benito's working terrific, you know, and even Judge Benny Ochoa, when there's people from Hollingen or from the northern part of the county, he sends them to San Benito. So this would be an additional place where they can send people to pay their fines at court costs.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Item J, consideration authorization to increase the juror reimbursement rate from twenty-eight dollars to forty dollars as per the expiration of subsections A dash one, A dash two, and F three, chapters of Texas Government Code on September first, two thousand thirteen.
So move.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Quick question on that. Martha, is that going to impact our budget? By how much? No? Okay.
Was it something we said, everybody's leaving, huh?
Everybody got what they wanted.
I guess. Item K, discussion of possible action on leasing county property known as the Aguirre Building located in San Benito, Texas.
For the court's information, you know, I was approached probably a month and a half ago about some individuals or organizations wanting to see about leasing that building from the county and bringing it up to some kind of standard. It is in poor, poor condition, and I, you know, my comment to them at the time was that we were not going to be putting much money into it unless we were going to utilize it. We had no plans to utilize it at the time, and I asked Dovia to research and possibly give us some information on what kind of process we would go to, or what would facilitate us being able to lease that building to, whether it be a 501(c), the EDC, the city, or anyone else that might be interested. And I think she's researched it and has something for us so that we can all be in the same wavelength.
Okay. Dovia?
Judge Protam and commissioners, the usual method by which the county leases or sells property is usually by a public auction, or a sealed bid, or when we want to lease property, we can go out for RFPs as well, it's an alternative method. However, there is, in the local government code, chapter two seventy-two, two methods by which if we are dealing with another political organization subdivision, then that allows us to sell or donate for less than fair market value, also to lease to another political subdivision for less than fair market value, as long as there is a public purpose, then we are, the county is allowed to do that. In the terms of when you want to lease property, you would have to have a contract that would have as part of the terms, some way to maintain control and require that the intent or the use of the building would be for a public purpose. So we wouldn't really be able to use these two statutes with a nonprofit, but we could do it with the city of San Benito, if, you know, if they were working, if we wanted to work with them, and then they could probably, you know, helping them help, the other organizations helping them as, you know, as they try to make repairs to that building.
Do we have a tenant, Commissioner?
There's an interesting group of people, not one particular...
No particular one?
No, there's some, I know that there's an organization, I know the Rotary Club, it's kind of like the same group that came before us when the Dolly Vincent was going on, that all that issue. You know, it was the same group of people at the time that were wanting to restore Dolly to some kind of condition, or help us clean it, you know, and utilize it so that we could market it better. And I think it's the same group of people that were then interested, that are trying to kind of like renovate downtown.
Sure.
The letter, the letter that was sent to Commissioner Garza has the San Benito Historical Society, the Rotary Club, the San Benito EDC, the city of San Benito, so those are some of the organizations, plus the city.
It's a group of people, you know, and I told them, I says, hey, we need to look at it, see what we can legally do, and then go from there. But I think that it's probably the Historical Society mostly, and, you know, those type of folks that want to be able to see about renovating.
So you'd like a motion from us supporting the idea of leasing?
To give Dovia authority to, you know, go through whatever legal process we need to go through.
You want to go ahead and make that motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Good, that's good, that's a good idea. Item I, I mean K, I mean L, consideration approval of Cameron County Sheriff and Jail Division Matrix Compensation Schedule.
Morning, commissioners. Last week, we were charged with the, by the court, to go ahead and develop a matrix for the jail division, as long as it stayed with budget neutral with the thousand dollar raise. We prepared that and we've sent it to heavy air. Kind of confused by the last motion about the one thousand dollar across the board raise, does that...
That's for the slot.
Oh, okay.
You have the authority to...
Right. No, what we did, we did establish a matrix in the jail division as fair and equitable with merit and seniority and by rank, and that coincides with our next request to create corporal positions. That's going to help, that's the sheriffs.
Okay.
What's that?
I was showing him this, this is the sheriffs.
Where's the other one?
Where's the jail?
Y'all don't have the jail copy?
No, sir.
It's by rank.
You know, I want to be very honest with everyone out on the commissioners' court and out there. My intent was to give every employee a thousand dollar raise, not to give departments money so that they could divvy up, you know, and I will stand to that. I think that it doesn't matter where we're at, we have longevity pay already in place for folks that have been in your department.
Not in the jail, sir. Jailers don't get longevity pay.
In the sheriff's department. I don't know where...
Jailers don't get that pay.
Okay. I don't know who's representing what up there.
I'm representing the jail, and we have a turnover rate of about sixty-five a year, so, you know, we're going to, we give everyone a thousand, they know what they're getting into on the entry level, we give them a thousand dollar raise, we're not separating anybody from that's been here ten years or twelve years.
And that was, and that was not, you know, my intent of the raise was to bring everybody up a thousand dollars, you know, regardless of whether they were a jailer, or a lieutenant, or whatever, you know, it'd be across the board, and a thousand dollars is a little bit more as a percent to a lower paid employee, but they're the ones that need the most help, you know, and, you know, I have a concern with, you know, I mean, I see some of, are these pages yours? No?
You should have mine, mine are right here.
Where are the, your pages? Behind that maybe?
I don't think we got that. Let me see if it's back here. No, I didn't get that.
I have three hundred and sixty-four employees, Commissioner, compared to the...
I don't dispute any of those figures.
And the salary schedules have been skewed for the last twenty-five years, so we're just, we just want the opportunity to correct it.
Is that per slot or per employee that you have hired? Because you have some vacancies, right?
Yes, sir, we have, we have constant vacancies.
So that's per slot?
That's correct. We, when we developed our matrix, that all the folks that were on probation and been here less than a year, we only gave them two hundred and fifty dollars out of that thousand. With the remaining monies, we went ahead and tried to separate, establish corporal positions, because they do the work of sergeants, so they're not getting paid on those weekends and holidays and days off, so we wanted to establish a corporal position. We, lieutenants, we have some lieutenants that only make, that are four thousand dollars separated from the other ones, we'd like to keep those, get those folks up to, up to par. We've got folks that have been here twenty-nine years that are lieutenants and staff members, and they're still making as much as an entry level position, so we just wanted to make it equitable and fair as possible. And this is the only opportunity to do it at this time.
So, I don't, you have something like this?
Not at this time. I have the old salary schedule and then I have...
Because here you have a bunch of job title, employee names, but you don't have it.
This is, this is, that's the existing salary schedule, and you've got a gorgeous, like a, that's much like as an assistant jail officer.
Well, you've got it, right? I mean, we don't set this.
I was gonna...
I know, but we don't do this, you do that, you know, I mean, we don't, we don't fill in names and slots, you know, that's part of what you guys do.
Well, we were hoping for the opportunity to clean it up.
Without seeing something more, you know, I, I can't...
Because this right here, this is for the sheriff's department, right?
That's correct, Commissioner. And this is something that was discussed with the county judge, and he agreed that we should do something like this. This is a one-time opportunity to clean up our salary schedules and set our salaries accordingly based on the years of service.
And this was based...
And that goes for the jail as well, Commissioner.
And this was based on the fact that there's some departments that will come in and do mid-year budget neutral transfers, so for instance, the DA's office has an assistant DA that they get rid of the position and create an investigator and a secretary, or they eliminate a secretary that's making forty, and then create a new position making thirty, and then take that ten and move it somewhere else. That was the discussion about this, right?
Yes, sir.
And so this was a way to say, okay, the thousand dollars that each slot's going to get, instead of you giving the employee that's only been with the county one year the same raise that the person that's been here thirty years is getting, you're going to put a matrix in effect.
That is correct, Commissioner.
How does this matrix, though, how is this going to affect in the future when we do increases? In other words, let's say, two years from now, we do another thousand dollar increase across the board per employee, is it going to get built into this matrix? Is it gonna...
We can if you allow us to, or we could, it'll be just whatever amount that we get across the board.
Well, no, I mean, that's why I'm asking, because is this a one-time matrix, or is this going to be a working matrix? In other words, right now, you have a zero to two-year range.
Correct.
Someone that's a two-year employee right now, next year will become a three-year employee.
That's correct.
So what that does is it requires us to give them a four hundred dollar increase in addition to what the zero to two-year employee's getting, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
So is it going to tie us to have to give those increases?
Well, that would be up to...
Every time?
We would like to have, if we can do this, this budget year and maybe one more budget year, we should be okay. We can fix it. Because we've had these same slots for over twenty years, you know, and we plug in people who we can, based on the years of service, but it's very difficult because we have different salary schedules, different salaries.
For instance, if there's a clerk that's making twenty-nine thousand dollars a year and she leaves, when we hire another clerk off the street, we don't want to pay her the twenty-nine, that's the highest rank you can get, but the way the system says is you got to fill that slot or go through a budget, through a process where we have to come to the court and say we want to make the adjustment. And, well, it's, you know, it's up to you folks. The thousand across the board's easiest for us and our employees, because we have to go back and tell them why they're not getting a thousand dollars, you know, based on...
Yeah, you know, like, this is yours, right, Gus?
That's correct.
You know, you've got thirty-nine employees that will receive raises of less than a thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Everyone receives a minimum of four hundred, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Going back to those people and saying, the court approved a thousand dollar raises, but you're only giving us four hundred, you know, that can be difficult to swallow for an employee, I would imagine. You know, I mean, if I were employee, I would ask, why? You know, why did you choose to give, you know, why did you choose to give one person eighteen hundred and me only four hundred?
Because we based it on a matrix system.
Right, but the matrix system normally would be something that would have been in existence. in existence already, not that we make up once we approve a thousand dollar raise. Cause if we didn't have a thousand dollar, I mean, you, were you working on the matrix before?
Yes, sir, we did, uh, a few years back and it was shut down.
Is that the same shit? Okay, it was shut down, it wasn't...
That's correct.
It wasn't approved.
The court opted just to give the raise.
Right, for the same reason, though, because it was across the board and it was easier, you know?
Well, that, I mean, you know, let's not waste any time here. If we're not gonna do it, let's not do it and move on.
Well, you know, I, I wanted to give a thousand dollar raises to every employee. I mean, that's the way I was looking at it.
I guess, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, Commissioner, we had a little bit of this discussion, and so the judge was saying, per slot. Because I had brought up the issue of, well, what happens in a situation like today, we had budget amendments on salaries, and you have employees that throughout the year got a substantial increase in their pay. And so originally, my question was, are we gonna give those same employees an increase again? And so I believe the, the court, the majority of the court's opinion was, we'll fund the slot and then let each department handle how they wanna, you know, cause we do it on a, every year, throughout the year, by doing budget neutral amendments.
I'm, I'm willing to waive my thousand dollars and to give it to somebody in the infirmary that I really believe needs to be there so we can stay competitive to keep nurses here in the infirmary. So, uh, can I voluntarily waive my, my raise, or do I get it across the board?
I don't, I don't think it would be...
Well, I, I think you'd have to come back and before October one, do a budget amendment that's neutral, Martha, and, and shift the money. But I, I think, see, what happened was, I think the judge said, in order to avoid a bunch of budget amendments, figure something out now so that we don't go through the whole year doing these amendments.
That's correct.
But, you know...
And then in order to stay competitive, we...
Is this yours right here?
That's, that's my working copy, yes, sir.
Working, I mean, does that mean that every medication aid gets zero increase?
There, there's only a few that have been here less than a year, yes, sir.
You know, these people are making twenty thousand dollars, okay, they're not kinda setting the world on fire with salaries, you know, I mean...
It's only the ones on probation, Commissioner, the ones that have been, in the jail, you can be on probation for like thirteen, fourteen months. We're putting a lot of money into training them, and we lose sixty a year, so that's, you know...
Well, maybe we won't lose them, but we add a little bit of money to their salaries.
Okay, I, that's fine, let's, let's do it, I mean...
Well, but, and that's why I asked, is this matrix gonna be something that carries on? Because then there's an incentive for the employee to stick around, saying, I know that when I hit my five-year mark and I go to six years, I'm gonna be getting bigger increases than the person that just came in.
Some, especially in the medical field, I, you know, those, there's a lot of transient positions there. They come and go, it's a revolving door in some of those positions. It's the folks that wanna make a career with Cameron County, and that's, those are the folks that are just getting ready to be vested and such that we wanna keep. We don't wanna go enough to, I, you know, to, to our competitors. And there's a lot of them in this industry right now, in the, in the corrections industry.
I, I, I hear what you're saying. It's kinda like right now with the court interpreters. We've got three court interpreters, we have a slot for a fourth. That position has remained vacant because no one will work for that money. So what happens, the other two that are there are scrambling all over the courthouse because we can't hire someone that'll take the job at the pay, and that's cause we even increased it. And even then, you won't have any takers. So when you pay below market, you're not gonna get anyone to take the job. That doesn't change the fact that we still have the need for the interpreter. And this matrix, I think, is a good thing if it's gonna carry on, not if, I mean, a one-time, one-year matrix, I don't know, will work unless we say, this is gonna be in place for all jail employees from here on out. Problem is, you get a new sheriff, they can come in and change this, right?
Sure.
I mean, we don't have control over that.
That's how it got in, that's over the years, is how this, this salary schedule with the different positions got into this.
Got changed?
Yes, sir.
You know, and we did the matrix system with a, well, I did with my front cover page, where you could actually see the amount, the, the years of service that each employee has, has, has served. So, come next budget year, if you give us, give the sheriff's office a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, if it's a thousand dollars across the board, we'll continue to plug in the numbers, and you could clearly see the matrix system.
Well, but, but, see, and that was my question, depending on how long your employees have been with you, these numbers are gonna vary.
Yes, sir.
And does it force us to have to fund more than what we gave everyone else?
Whatever, whatever, no, sir. Whatever, whatever the court decides to give next budget year, let's say it's, uh, eight hundred dollars, uh, next year, then I'll work with those eight hundred dollars and we'll...
Adjust the number.
Plug them in accordingly, and we bring it before the court so that you can see the fairness that we're doing on how we're paying every employee. It's not like, well, I'm taking five thousand dollars and I'm gonna give it to this person because he's my, my friend, a personal friend of mine. No, sir. I'm bringing, I'm bringing you a matrix system before this court for you to look at and approve. Or if you don't wanna approve it, then tell me.
I, I understand.
In the real world, I don't know anybody as a, uh, probationary employee that gets a raise, you know, two months or three months into their, their tenure as an employee. So there's a lot of merit to what you're doing, it's just, it's just hard to, I, it's, it's hard to, anytime you implement this kind of thing, it's gonna, it's gonna affect some people very well and some people very badly.
But you, well...
But you have to start.
You gotta start some work, Commissioner.
Yeah, that's the problem. That's, that's the problem that matrix systems do. And until it rolls for a couple of, a couple of rounds...
Yes, sir.
Then it all kinda balances out.
That is correct.
Yeah, so. I guess my big concern is, as long as you continue to, to follow this system going forward every year.
And we will bring it before the court for your final say, your final approval, and you can clearly see how we're, how we created this matrix system. I mean, it's not like we're gonna do hidden numbers for certain people. It's all black and white, color-coded. I mean, if, if this court cannot understand how we're, we're doing this, then I don't know how else to explain it.
Mr. Reyna, I personally would like to sit down with you and go over this. Uh, I don't know if the court has a problem with tabling it till next week, unless the court wants to move forward, then we can do that.
I, I think in the interest of fairness to everybody, that way everybody gets a, maybe a one-on-one explanation. Uh, would, would you have a problem?
No, I don't have a problem, Commissioner.
Okay, let's, I, I want to entertain a motion to table this till the following, next meeting.
Sir, move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Benavides to table this for one week.
Second.
Have a motion of second to table this, all in favor, send it by by saying aye?
Aye, but I, I do have one...
I'm sorry.
Chief Liner, could you bring us maybe something like this?
Send us copy, something?
Um, that would show us kinda the breakdown?
Sure.
Because one of the things that I think we need to consider in looking at this is, these numbers will change, the amount that we contribute in will change. So right now, we seem to have a heavy, or a large number of employees in the six to fifteen-year range.
The jail didn't, did it? Didn't do theirs like that, Commissioner. We did ours by rank. We set it up by rank and seniority. Uh, we only had six people that had over twenty years, so we, we compensated them with five hundred dollars each, but we wanted to establish it by rank, so our lieutenants and our sergeants and our corporals are at least fifteen to two thousand dollars separated from each other.
So your matrix is by rank?
Yes, sir.
Not by longevity?
Not by longevity.
Okay.
You want your worksheets back, Mike?
No, sir, you can, I mean, you can...
I would like to get a copy of that.
Yeah, make sure...
We, we were, we were gonna go to the next level once the court decided what, you know, what we were gonna do. Our marching orders were, make sure it's just budget neutral and, you know, that's what we did, as fair and equitable as we could, budget neutral. Now, there are some dollars in there. We, we gave our, our Director of Nursing a, a healthier raise than everybody else because we really need to stay competitive to keep that person in that slot.
I saw that.
No, I, I, I understand. I just, that's why I was trying to digest the, how you come up with these figures. So these are by rank, not by longevity?
Not by longevity.
So you can have somebody that's never increased rank, been there twenty years, but not gonna get the increase because they don't have rank?
Everyone's gonna get the thousand dollars. The only way I could make mine work is the last sixty-eight people that were employed to Cameron County. Some of them only been here two weeks. We're not gonna get the thousand dollars, they're only gonna get two hundred and fifty dollars apiece because they've only been here. Most, two out of five quit. Every, when we hire five people, two will quit right within a week. So why should I give those folks a thousand dollars or the slot?
Well, it's not a matter of giving the person, it's a matter of giving that slot the money.
Sure.
To maybe have them not quit because they're getting a little better paid.
Well, they know coming in what they're making, Commissioner. I mean, they're coming in making, entry-level jailers are pretty good, uh, is, is a pretty good pay. It's twenty-five thousand dollars a year. They know what they're getting into. It's the sergeant that only makes a thousand more than him, and the lieutenant that only makes two thousand more than that.
They know the pay they're getting, but they don't know the...
They don't...
...type of job till they actually get in there and start working it.
Exactly.
And that's when they head for the hills.
It's not for everybody.
Okay. So, yeah, if, if you could give us maybe something like this?
I'll sit here, if you want, I'll go through every single slot and give you a job description and explain all their responsibilities and everything they do if we have the time.
Next week.
Well, I mean, if you could just, something we can kinda follow along, cause this thing I'm looking at, it, it gives me a good description of what's going on, but...
We'll, we'll get you that, sir.
Thank you.
Are we gonna do this for every department? I mean, I mean, if we're gonna allow one department to do it...
Y'all get longevity pay, don't you?
Can any department come in and bring us a matrix and say, look, you know, I mean...
It's not a bad idea, but it's good, it's very, it's, it's kinda late in the, in the year or the budget cycle to do that, but that's normally how most cities do that. The entire, uh, every employee is part of a matrix system, and they're, they're, when you give a raise, it's, it's according to slot, and they move up steps in that slot. But it's, it's a very complicated deal to do, it's not easy to do.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons why we've always done like, by employee raises, cause everybody's treated equally.
Sure.
And the folks at the bottom end of the rug gets a little bit more of a percentage in relation to the race.
Okay, well, we have a motion of second to table, all in favor, send it by by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, item M, consideration approval to reclassify ten jailer slots to ten corporal slots to be adopted by the Civil Service Commission and grandfathered in current acting, as current acting corporals. Who's gonna handle that, Mike?
What we've asked to do here, Commissioners, is to separate, uh, ten individuals that for years, I started, I, I was an assistant sergeant, Captain Reyna was an assistant sergeant at one time in the jail. That's what they call him, they call him that, or a corporal, but they've never truly been recognized by, uh, by Cameron County as far as the human resources and, and subsequently the, um, civil service or the human resources. We'd like to separate that and designate those positions because those are the folks, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, whenever the sergeant's not there, the sergeant's off or on holiday, or sick, those are the folks that step up and take over. They volunteer their time for that, they do the scheduling when the sergeant's not there, and, uh, we're just asking for the courtesy to, uh, acknowledge that and, and grandfather those folks and...
Need a motion, please?
Well, doesn't this go right along with the matrix that you're putting together?
Well, Commissioner, if you look at, at their salaries, they're all over the board too. Um, but if, if we, if we can't adjust them or give them the, the fifteen hundred dollar, I, what I wanna do is give them the thousand plus an extra five hundred dollars. They're still not gonna be equal because of the disparity in their, in their salaries. Some make twenty-eight, some make twenty-five. Uh, but they will at least have that rank and hopefully get fifteen hundred that we wanted to give them. If not, uh, we'd just like them to have the rank. Maybe in the future, we can find some monies to, to separate them out.
Judge R. Timm, and Commissioners, let me ask one quick question. Did you run this by Juan about the civil service aspects of this?
We ran it through Mr. Vialliel, and I believe he met with Mr. Gonzalez, and they said that the court could, could authorize this, to, to grandfather this in. Once we establish this, any future corporal have to follow the, uh, civil service guidelines and test.
Okay, now, is that, we're talking about the job descriptions themselves?
That's correct.
Because it's my understanding is, and I'd wanna double-check it, but civil service, you know, to the extent that we're changing any hiring or, or that sort of thing, you know, that they would need to be the ones to approve, you know, any recommendation that this court is, makes, is that your understanding or not?
Yes, it is. If the court wishes to approve it pending civil service review and that, we, we'll, we'll go for that.
In other words, you're, you're working all that out with civil service as well?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, we wanna do it, you know, accordingly, by the book.
I'd like civil service to approve it before I approve it.
Well, we can make a motion, you know, uh, depending on what civil service does. I mean, we make it, if they don't approve it, then our motion is moot. We can approve it, you know, and waiting for their approval.
Yeah, but I'd like to approve it based on their approval.
Okay, you'd rather wait, Commissioner?
Yes.
I'm not sure how quickly the Civil Service Commission can be brought together to...
We've been waiting four months on them for, on a, on a different, different issue. Um, I don't know if, because of a quorum, they couldn't get together or what have you, but we've, the, the issue with the captain's position that's next, uh, has been brought before them for a decision for the last four months. Mister, again, we're going on Mr. Vialliel's advice of bring it before the Commissioners Court, and, uh, if they approve it, then we can, we can, uh, bring it before the court, Civil Service Commission.
I think that they could go ahead and post, you know, a, a special meeting before the Commissioners Court meets finally on the let, final numbers here. If we're talking about next week, I think they could have time to do that if you can get them all together.
Can we approve this in and upon their passing?
Sure.
That's up to the court.
I don't have a problem with that.
It doesn't put the cart before the horse, though, Bruce?
Well, I don't think so, because ultimately, to the extent that the, the Civil Service Commission has sway over or has authority over these job descriptions and hiring and that sort of thing, see, that's what they're gonna be interested in.
Well, but aren't we gonna be eliminating the old positions and creating new ones?
Well, I'm not sure. Uh, maybe we need to clarify that.
They're just gonna be, from what they are right now, corporals, they're just gonna be called corporal, along with the duties that they're already doing. There's, they've been doing it for, geez, twenty-five, thirty years the same way. We just wanna acknowledge it.
And you're not attempting to change the civil service coverage for anybody here?
No, no.
Okay.
Well, but we're, we're doing this to, to take care of the agenda item that we just tabled, which was a matrix.
Even if they don't get a raise, sir, we would like them to at least officially be designated as, as corporals. Uh, we, there is a rank and structure system in the law enforcement.
You informed us that you're developing a matrix according to rank. The next item on the agenda is changing ten ranks, okay? So, that tells me that, that, you know, we're accommodating a matrix with this change. I would rather see the Civil Service Commission go through a process, vent it out, and then see what comes up, and then bring it to us, you know? I mean, to me, I'm just making an accommodation to take care of the matrix that's gonna be presented to me next week, and I don't wanna do that.
Oh, because your matrix is by rank, not by longevity, right?
Yes, but, but regar, I mean, regardless, if, if we get the raise or we don't go with the matrix, we'd still like to identify those ten folks as, as corporals, um, in, in the civil service ranks.
How, what is the, their time that they've been employed? The newest one?
Some, some of them been here five, six years. The newest one, uh, two years. The, it, nobody really wants to step up to this job because it doesn't pay anymore, and yet they have all the responsibility of a sergeant.
I understand.
One of the wishes of the commission?
Giopino's dead.
What has happened on this civil service is that the court is the only one that can reclassify the schedule. The Civil Service Commission only responds to what you authorize. That's part of the civil service rules, and so the only one that can reclassify is you all. And if that's what he's requesting and you're okay with it, civil service will be okay with it.
So then we have to act before they act?
Yes.
They can't act before we act?
No, not on reclassification. Reclassification is only the authority of the court.
Okay, if we reclassify, doesn't money have to be... Okay, if we reclassify, doesn't money have to be associated with the reclassification?
Not necessarily, it's up to them, if they think he's, they're pretty well compensated, then they decide that, if they're already at a higher level than the rest of the employee, because, you know, if they're gonna be bosses, they need to make more than the regular jailer. But it's, it's up to the, the sheriff and their staff, if they think that they're already at a high level, but if they're gonna give them a raise, they can, but if they've been doing this job and they've been acting jacks, I know we used to call that in the army, acting jacks, they would wear a stripe, but they weren't the boss, but that's, that's what it, what it, what it is.
So we would have to pay them more than the regular jailer?
If they're already making more and they feel that that's enough compensation, then they need to tell you that. But if it, if they do not, then you need to pay them more because they're gonna be a higher level. It's what you all think, you guys handle the purse strings.
I think, based on those comments, I think we need to, to approve this, I need a motion to approve this.
Have a mo-
Have a motion?
So, but, but, so I just want to be clear about this, where, if we, earlier we voted to give a thousand dollars to all employees.
Mm-hmm.
If any of these corporals that we create are making the same amount as any of the other employees, we're gonna have to give that corporal a bump in pay.
Well, right now, if they're all corporals, then they all need to be making the same, they're all being promoted at the same time to corporals, and they need to all be at the same level.
They're not all making the same.
So, so they would all have to be making the same amount of money?
It would be preferable, yes, it would be preferable, at the beginning, at the onset, it would be better if they are, because they're all being promoted as corporal with the same responsibilities, right?
It would be, yeah, you're right, you're correct, and we'd like to do that, but there's no way we can do that. There's lieutenants that make four thousand dollars more than an entry level. Uh, then that would mean we'd have to bring all the lieutenants up to the same level. And, and we just don't have the funds to do that, we just want to be fair and equitable. We want to give them their one thousand dollars plus the five hundred, and we're taking it from the back end of the sixty-eight people that have less than a year of, uh, service in Cameron County.
But, so right now, w- with this matrix, would they all then be making the same?
No, sir.
So maybe that's what the matrix needs to be, if you're gonna do it by rank?
Well, I only have six, I only have a certain amount of money to work, dollars to work with, uh, to stay budget neutral, that's, that's it. So, and I got three hundred and sixty-eight employees, so that, that money only goes so far.
No, no, I understand, but, but if what he's saying is we've gotta be consistent, then depending on who gets raised to, to corporal, that really they should all make the same?
Well, that's just like any other department though, Commissioner, or the DA's office or something, you say, well, all, all, all the assistant DA should make the same amount as the, you know, as the ones doing the same responsibility.
Are they civil service? Are they assistant DAs?
No, they're not.
No, no, they're not covered under civil service.
See, I mean, no, I'm just saying 'cause of the civil service rules, I mean, we could get ourselves in a bind here.
We're not doing it now, there, there's, we're not doing that now. All, all, if, if you go by rank, they're not making the same amount of money.
Longevity has something to do with that. But, but if, if, if they're gonna give them an extra five hundred dollars plus the thousand dollars, well, for, they're gonna be at, at a higher level, but some of these lieutenants have been here twenty years, say, for example, and they've, through years, they've made, they're making more money, yes, that happens, longevity means a lot, but if they're gonna give them, you're gonna give them a thousand dollars and they're gonna give them five hundred dollars more as a corporal, that would be compensation and a-
Well, but the, the problem here is, we're, we're putting together, or they're putting together a matrix, not based on longevity, but based on rank.
Well, that's the way the matrix normally worked, that you give them levels of one, two, three, and normally that's the years, and, and that's when you start, but if you start from scratch, like they're gonna do, you have an entry level for all jailers, and then you have a matrix for lieutenants and for second, for corporals, each one has its own line of, of pay, and their job on, on the salary schedule is in a different level.
So creating this matrix is a little bit more complicated than it seems?
It's very complicated, we, we tried to do it for everybody in the county before, and the judge was very much for it until we saw what it took. It's a good thing if you only did promotions on anniversary dates, okay? If you're doing on anniversary dates, then you don't have to come out with a big lump of money at the beginning of the budget cycle. Throughout the year, you're giving people raises from the, you know, when they have their anniversary date, and, and with every raise, there's a, 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 call it, uh, what do you call it, a, when? Yeah, evaluation, you get an evaluation, satisfactory, whatever, and then you give them that, that increase on that matrix. And, and the state goes up to eighteen on the matrix from one through eighteen, but you, every year you give them a raise, but every person coming in, comes in at entry level. You don't start somebody at, at the higher level when they come in because you like them more. Everybody starts at entry level, so therefore, when somebody leaves that's got seniority, his money that left over, you put it back in the pool to give raises, and eventually, you're gonna save a lot of money, and you don't have to come up with money for raises because the, the old employees that are leaving, are retiring, their top salary goes to the bottom and they start, the new person coming in starts at entry level. And, and that's the way a good salary matrix work, that, that was why it was difficult, because we have a lot of, a lot of, our, our counties are different than anybody else because the majority of department heads are elected officials, and they have that power through the statutes, that they run their department to the best of their ability, and they're the ones that decide what their, who their employee's gonna be that's gonna be administrators.
So I guess the problem, Mr. Villarreal, would be that, I guess the problem would be that not all the elected officials think the same way.
No, they don't.
And so, that leaves it open for-
They absolutely don't.
Yeah?
They absolutely don't.
So-
That's the reason the matrix is very hard to work, now, in the jail, in the jail is one department, and they set it up for that department, it, it can't work because of one boss, elected. And, and in the other departments, we can't dictate-
And if there's a change in elected official there, also, that can change.
He has to come up to you for changes.
If, if you have an officially adopted matrix, like say for your department, uh, the sheriff's department, there's all, there's always, it's a slot and steps.
Yes.
That, that's how it works, and you go from slot, uh, slot B to one, slot B to two, three, all the way up to, and you get the slot C, and that, and that's how the salaries are based. Of course, that should have been done a long time ago, it just cannot happen overnight on one, on one quick change, it's gonna take years.
Well, especially when people are making different amounts, right, at the same position?
That's always gonna happen, 'cause you have, it goes back to the anniversary dates he talked about, you're gonna have different people making different money based on the time they've been in the, at the sheriff's department, or any department for that matter.
Well, just like with Aurora's, Aurora's department, Ms. Ortiz and Aurora have the same years of working for the county, they both have thirty-something years, and, and so, when she leaves, she's gonna be high dollar. If they replace her, are they gonna be, get paid what she was making, or they gonna start them at a lower rate? It's a discretion, it's a discretion of the elected official.
Won't the next person get bumped up for the next?
It's up to the elected official.
But if you had a matrix in place, the next person would have to get bumped up?
Yeah. They have to test for promotions.
That's true.
Or they could come in and hire someone just out of college?
Well, if it's one of those appointed positions, that, that happens too.
The problem of implementing a matrix system is gonna cost a bunch of money upfront at the very first to get everything kind of equaled out.
Yes and no.
What's the county, what's the county can't do at this time?
Well, because, because a matrix, you don't have to do it like you do it now, at budget time, you give everybody a raise or nobody a raise. In a matrix, you do it on anniversary dates, and so therefore, it's spread out throughout the year what you're paying, increasing the people's pay.
But don't you have to know that amount when you set your budget for the year?
You do, and it's not that hard to figure out, we've got good computers with, with Excel, you can, pff, work it all out, but-
How long would it take you to do that?
I can't do it, you need to get a computer-
You said it wasn't that hard, Mr. V?
It's a computer whiz, no, I'm too old to get programmed. Okay?
We had, we had a motion to approve-
I hope I could help you.
Commissioner Benavides?
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
So, if we sa-, if we approve this though, are we stuck then to this matrix thing? That's, that's my question.
That's it, and make them exempt from, or to grandfather them, and that's it.
That's all it does.
Grand?
Yeah.
How many current acting corporals do you have? Okay, so you're gonna reclassify ten and ten, or is it?
No.
Ten, ten total?
Ten total.
Ten total.
And they're already doing the job right now, they just don't get the title?
They've been doing that for over thirty years, Commissioner. The same thing, we've just never got around to, or getting around to prove it so they can get the, be acknowledged and recognized for what they do.
And even if we don't, if we don't do this matrix?
Exactly.
It'll be fine.
Exactly, and, and, you know, we just use the word matrix, we, we were given a certain amount of money to work with, with three hundred and sixty-eight employees, and, and we can't, uh, ideally, if we had a, a, you know, all the money to make it right, that'd be, you know, in a perfect world, we'd make it right, but this is just steps at a time, and issues were brought up where someone's in a slot and they worked thirty-five, or thirty years for the county, and over those years, they got five hundred across the border, a thousand, that position, that slot got built up pretty high. When that person leaves, there's no way to set up, you, I have to come before the court to split that salary out and try to give it, you know, where, where it's due. Um, and, and it happens in, in a department that large, we have a lot of people retire and a lot of people quit, so.
All right, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and second the motion, uh, with the understanding that if we don't pass this matrix, there's not gonna be an expectation of more increase.
Well, we could go ba-, again, and give everybody the thousand dollars, that's, that's not, if, if the court wants to put the matrix thing off for another year, that's fine too.
Let's get past this corporal issue first.
Okay.
Well, but, but, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure we're not tying ourselves-
No, we're not.
Be- because what Mr. Villarreal said makes me think that we have to pay them more than the regular-
You're just changing their title, all you're doing is changing-
Then what do we do now, I mean, they're already doing the work.
Yeah, but, but you're having, you're paying them the same thing as somebody else that is classified differently.
Well, they're the same guys that've been, the guys that've been re-changed, the same guys doing it now. It's not ten you guys coming in as corporals, right, isn't that correct? It's the same people, it's the same people doing the work now that are gonna be reclassified?
That is correct.
The newest one is a two-year-old employee, the oldest one is thirty-seven years maybe?
The only issue that I see, Commissioners, is that if you're, if you're going to make, if you're going to authorize for these ten jailers to become corporals, you have to pay them.
And that's my concern.
Yeah, you have to. It, it makes sense, you know, I mean, you're, you're reclassifying a position and giving it more responsibility.
Are we affected in any way if we wait till next week, when we discuss that?
We can, we can wait, I mean, that's, that's a good point, I mean, there, we've been doing this for years, maybe they need to, uh, uh, take that up with civil service, I, that's fine with me too, I want to see them get the best deal that they can get, 'cause they're hardworking people, they deserve the money. If they're doing the job that, that they're, that the sergeants are doing when they're not there, they should be compensated.
I, I agree, I just want to make sure that we're not, by doing this, forcing our hand on the other issue that we haven't decided yet. Until we can see your breakdown.
Okay, so then I rescind my motion?
Your motion.
Table it till next week?
Yeah.
That way we can see the, the spread. Okay, I'll second that motion.
Have a motion second to table, item M, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item N, consideration and approval to reclassify jail slots, uh, two dash one hundred dash fifty-one twenty to commander, from a covered position to an exempt position, not covered by Cameron County Civil Service.
That's a position that was open, it's commander's position, it's filled right now temporarily. The sheriff would like to have that position, um, exempt from civil service?
What, what position is it?
Commander position in the jail division.
And it's a new position, or what?
No, it's, it's a, uh, com- vacated.
Someone retired?
Uh, Commander Madrano. Right now, we have act, uh, acting command-
Why would we wanna remove, I mean, what's the rationale here?
Well, it's been, it's been nine years since the sheriff took office in, in the jail division. We structured it a, a certain way in order to fix a bunch of problems that we inherited from the previous sheriff. Uh, in order to do that, that's, we structured that, that system that way, where the two commanders were under the civil service. The sheriff would now like to have one of those commanders be exempt from civil service so he can put him on s- some different specific projects. He's asking the court, again, we asked Mr. Villarreal the steps to do that, do we have to go through the civil service first? And since we're gonna reclassify it, we're coming to the court, just like we did with the positions with the, with the corporals.
So you're asking one, that the one, you have two positions?
That's correct.
One is not exempt, and the, the next one that's empty right now, you, you want it exempt?
That's correct.
The same position?
There's two posi-, well-
Yeah, there's two commander slots.
Right, but one is, one is on civil service.
They're, they're both classified under civil service, the sheriff would like to have one, one of those reclassified as exempt.
One classified and one classified.
That's correct.
Isn't that kind of discriminatory for their position?
It's a vacant position right now.
I know it's a vacant position, but if it's the same position, shouldn't it be both on civil service, Mr. V?
The sheriff wants to-
We're just picking and choosing who we want covered and not wanted.
This has to do with the, the sheriff being able to have, uh, some kind of authority over that person without having the, the cover of civil service protecting the employee.
He wants to make it an appointed position by the sheriff, change it from a, of a hiring position where they have to test, to an appointed position by the sheriff, as one of his administrators, just like he has the director of the jail and, and the commanders, they're the only ones that, that, that are appointed. He wants to make the jail, I think he was gonna change the title to Colonel, or something like that.
Colonel?
And make him, make him an appointed administrator, rather than a tested administrator.
But doesn't this go against the whole matrix system that we're just trying to put in place? Well, but, I mean, the idea is people stay with the county, they work longer, they try to go up the ranks.
I, I work at the pleasure of the sheriff, and, and let me tell you, Commissioner, the last sheriff we had fired me. You know, I didn't have a job for four years, so I, I mean, I've worked other places, but I work for the pleasure of the sheriff.
Wouldn't you rather be protected by civil service than working at the pleasure?
Well, that, that's, that's my personal opinion, I'm up here speaking on behalf of the sheriff, Sheriff Lucio, sir.
You would have probably quit though, right?
Sir?
You would have probably quit if he hadn't fired you.
Uh, well, I, let's put it this way, he didn't, he didn't extend my, uh, my employment.
But, but, 'cause you weren't a, you weren't civil service, right?
No.
We didn't have civil service then.
Right, had you been civil service?
I was still the jail administrator, but I, right.
Fired you, right?
Well, I mean, like, the, that's a, that's a different topic, but I, I'm just saying that this position, the sheriff wants the authority to appoint, uh, the person he wants to, to do the jobs and responsibilities that he wants to create.
And civil service doesn't allow him to do that?
Well, I'm just asking for the reclassification, uh-
No, but you're telling me he wants to be able to reappoint, I'm just asking why civil service would not allow him to do that?
Because it's a civil service covered position right now, but since it's, no, there's, right now, it's, it's a temporary, a person that's there temporarily, that's why we're coming before this court to request that, that, uh, that, uh, we get, we have this position available as an appointed position, it's a commander position. And quite frankly, Commissioners, uh, the two commander positions should have never been in civil service, 'cause those are high-ranking positions, and those should be, uh, at the sheriff's, uh, at the, whatever the sheriff wants to do, whom he wants to place in those positions. For example, if, uh, Sheriff Lucio happens to retire and a new sheriff comes in, well, he's gonna want his people, his top-ranking people, he's gonna decide who he wants to place. And, and that is why we're, since we have this one vacancy, he wants to reclassify it, I mean, it's very simple, it's either a yes or a no.
Yeah, but we can reclassify those anytime, right?
It's, it's better to do it when they're empty, it's a lot easier when you have like that.
Yeah, for example, we have two commander positions, there's one that's still, we have Commander Lial, he's covered because he's already, he's there. The day he retires, we'll come back to this court and request that we reclassify that position as well.
So, so what, how did they become covered under civil service?
Because when civil service was created, those two commander positions were incorporated into the civil service as well.
Were y'all here, with Sheriff Lucio, the sheriff?
To protect the jail operation, basically.
And, and at that point, he didn't?
No, he, he was okay with it. But now, he, since we have a vacancy, he wants to reclassify it, I mean, I don't understand, what is it that you don't understand, well, what he's trying to do?
Well, what I don't understand is, why couldn't he hire whoever he wants if the person's covered through civil service?
Well, if the person's covered through civil service, you gotta go through the testing process. If the position is not covered under civil service, he makes the appointment, for example, I'm the chief deputy, he appoints whomever he wants, he's a jail administrator, he appoints whomever the sheriff wants because we're not covered under civil service.
we're not covered under civil service. The two commander positions were covered under civil service. Now we have a vacancy and he wants to be able to appoint a commander at his, whichever person he wishes to put in, place in there. Because it's a high-ranking position.
No, no, I understand. I just, I, I guess I, I didn't understand how, being civil service, he still couldn't choose who he wants to hire.
No, if it's a civil service-covered position, then you're allowed to test and whoever gets the highest score and, you know, that's what we have to select from.
Oh, he has to hire whoever gets the highest score?
Well, not necessarily, but.
That's not how it works. I mean, you don't have to hire the highest score on a civil ser- I mean, sir? Yeah, you hire the top three if they're, if everything works out, you know, right?
That's correct, Mr.
And then you can't just fire them. That's the difference. So he'd be able to just say, whoever commander it is, today I decided I don't want you on the team anymore and replace them without going through the civil service process.
That's correct. For example, myself and my jail administrator, we're, we work at the pleasure of the sheriff.
It, it's just like our employees, Commissioners. Our employees are exempt. We hire whoever we want to be our secretary, whoever we want to be our administrative assistant. There, in other words, if you want to, if you want to fire somebody tomorrow, you have full authority to do that. That's basically what the sheriff is asking.
That's correct.
He has control over that one position. And there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with it. If our, if our people were civil service, we may, we'd be, we'd have to inherit whenever, when we got elected, we'd have had to inherit whenever it came in and basically be stuck with that person until they violated civil service rules or we could document that they no longer should have a job for, with one of us.
Well, I kept the guy that was there when I came in.
But that was discretionary. That was your choice. But you didn't have to. My point is, you had the liberty to do the same. And I think, you know, one position for the sheriff, his commander, should be at his, my, my thing, they should be at his, at his pleasure. That's the way it works. Same thing with the DA's office. I think that, he, he terminated a bunch of people, brought a bunch of new people in.
Well, the DA, the DA does not have civil service.
No, I know, and, and, but, I think, and, and when you have positions of authority like your chief, whoever.
High-ranking positions.
High-ranking positions, they should be at the pleasure of the, of the department head. I really believe that's the way it should be. Not all departments have that, uh, authority, but we're fortunate we do and ours.
Well, my, my only concern there is, is having two people that have the same rank, the same title, do the same job, and we're treating them differently. That's my only concern.
Well, again, when this other commander decides that one day he wants to retire, then we'll come back before this court if I'm still here, uh, and will request that that position also be considered non-civil service so that the sheriff may appoint. Commander position.
Okay.
Be commander's, chief deputy, jail administrator.
And, and we don't have any legal issues with that, Bruce?
Uh, the, the commission, Civil Service Commission will have to approve this because this does change the plan, okay? Right now, like, uh, the chief deputy just said, he and the chief jail administrator are the only two exempt employees under the civil service protection that's available to all of the sheriff's department. Am I right about that? Isn't that what, all you got?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I think the proposal is to make sure that the one that is there is continued to be covered for civil service while opening up the new position as an exempt position, which would have to be cleared by the Civil Service Commission. See, it's a little different than the last one, which was basically just a reclassification. Uh, you know, we were talking about grandfathering. That's what threw me on that last one. But really, that's just a classification to be taken up next week. This one is a little different because you will need coverage change that will have to be authorized by the Civil Service Commission.
Well, but, and treating employees differently, we won't have an issue with that?
I don't think so because they are providing pro- protection for the one that is presently covered as, with civil service protection. And what, all they're asking for, like the commissioner was saying a minute ago, is the authority to hire who they want in a high-level position. And I think, if I understood the chief deputy correctly, eventually, when the one presently covered, the commander covered by civil service, retires or resigns or whatever he does, then they could come back and ask for the similar treatment there. The idea is to treat these two commander positions the same way going forward, grandfathering in the existing commander. And if the Civil Service Commission will go along with that, then, you know, there, there shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
So the Civil Service Com- Commission doesn't necessarily have to go with our recommendation if we were to.
They don't have to. I think that they would certainly want to listen to you about that and listen to the sheriff and what his concerns are about all that.
Again, what are the wishes of the commission, please?
Well, i- if it's not going to affect.
We notified the Civil Service Commission almost five months ago. It's still sitting on their, it's on their agenda. They just haven't been able to meet or.
We're not paying them enough.
Now, what if we reclassify the position? As a major?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
If we reclassify the position from a commander to a major, this court has the authority to reclassify?
Well, I, I don't think it's necessary. It's, it's either yes or no. I just, it's very simple.
I think, I think the classification is pretty much up to you all on how you want to classify these people, subject to the Commissioners' Court approval, okay? But, but when you talk about changing civil service coverage, now we're talking about going to the Civil Service Commission no matter what you're calling them. Because what you're basically attempting to do here is create at least one more presently and two more in the future exempt positions. Correct?
No, it's total of two positions, uh, non-civil service, at, whenever the current commander that is there now retires.
Okay, I think that's what I was saying, just a little differently. In other words, the commanders, as they are now named.
Yes, sir.
Would become exempt positions, understanding that the one that's presently there would be grandfathered in under civil service rules.
Well, there's, the one that's presently there is, is still under civil service. He's still employed.
Right.
When he, when he vacates, whenever he retires, then we would like to make that position as well, uh, non-civil service.
Right. Well, and that, that, I think that that's legally acceptable so long as the Civil Service Commission agrees. You know, ultimately, that's where we'll need to get the authority to do that because they're the ones that modify and amend those rules. You see what I mean?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I guess my, my only concern is that if at one point, when, when Civil Service Commission was created, you know, you're saying these positions shouldn't have been part of the Civil Service Commission. They should have been exempted.
The sheriff, when, when we first became civil service employees, with the exemption of myself and Mike, the sheriff went ahead and allowed the commander's position to become civil service. He could have said at that point, you know, I want to exempt the commanders, but since they're now, we, you know, they're, they were employed by him, he left it as is because they were already there.
So what's the rationale, I guess, of?
The two commander positions, again, they're high-ranking positions, and the sheriff wants to have the authority to appoint instead of going through the civil service.
No, no, but of putting them in to begin with, of, of having put them into civil service, why would we have done that?
Well, at the time, uh, the sheriff.
I wasn't here, but I'm just wondering.
At the time, Commissioner, the sheriff went ahead and, and allowed those two positions to become civil service. Now we have a vacancy, he wants to undo it so he can appoint.
No, no, I, I understand, but I guess to me, it's like when we talk about legislative intent, what was the reason behind putting them into civil service?
I, I can't speak for the sheriff, sir.
Okay, I'm just.
I know I was here when we put it in, and, and our intent was to have continuity of personnel seeing large operations like that, you know? I mean, not make it a political position. We had seen what had occurred in the previous four years in regards to political appointments. I mean, and we knew where we ended up, you know?
What would it be for you to, y'all to make me civil service? Can I request that or?
Take the commander job.
The sheriff, the sheriff can request that.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Yeah. I mean, it's that simple. If, just like this is on the agenda, put the item on the agenda. And the same would go for Gus. Now, whether the sheriff wants to have that position civil service is a different story.
Okay, well, I mean, because to me, if we put them in, not we, but this court or whoever, when they created the civil service position, there had to be a reason. And if, do we no longer have the need for that reason?
I'm, I'm sure, and when I prefaced the whole, the, the agenda item, it was going back to the previous sheriff. And again, Commissioner Garza made a, a real good point. I mean, I'm sure that was the intent of the court, to have continuity.
Continuity.
And, uh, make sure that there's something established in place that, 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 um, that you have a well-trained, department instead of appointing people or putting people from the, you know, compadre system, you know, in there, which I think a lot of that, we've learned our lesson from that. And I'm all for civil service. I, you know, I'm, I'm for it, but on this position here, uh, you know, I think the sheriff would like to have a little more leeway on, on his appointments. While he, and I, I believe the future sheriff would like, any future sheriff would like that as well. Uh, we went all the way to the top on that, and I, I think we corrected a lot of problems over the last eight, nine years. And, and we, we have other functions that we want that commander to do. For, you know, we're working with this, uh, trying to work with this Odyssey system and this Tyler system. And, uh, we, we want to take that person and, and spend more time on issues like that, jail overcrowding. Right now, we're at capacity. We're at fifteen hun- we're, we're at our ten percent capacity right now to this date. We would like to make sure that we can find other avenues to lower our population. And otherwise, we're going to be looking at sending inmates, first, sending federal inmates, uh, back. And then, second, sending inmates, uh, out of town. So there, there's a lot of issues. We want to move forward and do some positive things that would, um, that, that we would like this person to do, that would be classified a little bit different. And the obligation would be a little bit different than what's classified right now.
So, so they're going to be doing other duties than commander?
That's correct. That's correct.
Maybe the better idea is to reclassify it, like you said.
Like a major?
Uh, and.
Yeah.
Change the duties and make it a non, you know, covered or an exempt position so that the additional duties carve out a different niche. And, and because I think what it does is it keeps the continuity. I mean, because we don't know who our next sheriff will be. One thing is clear is Commander Lial knows his job. He knows how to run the ship. And if the idea was keep some continuity, then the way we don't disturb this is reclassify, like you said, to a different title, Colonel, Major, uh, whatever. And because you're saying additional duties, that may be the better solution to this. Because I guess to me, it makes, it makes it difficult when you have, at least for me, to see two employees that have the same title and everything, but we're treating them different.
Well, and, and again, we're, we're in a situation where, you know, we just renegotiate with the marshals. And so we're going to do different things with those folks. And that's completely different than, than the state inmates and such. So those responsibilities and, and the responsibility of, of, of running a federal detention facility are a little bit different as well. So that's one of the reasons, again, another reason why we have to restructure and reclassify at, at the higher level because now we've got a customer that, that expects a little bit more out of us, and, uh, we want to make sure that we offer that service.
So it'd probably be better to table this and then bring it back to reclassify the position?
With a different title.
Different title, different duties.
But exempt.
But exempt, right. And we could make an exempt because it's a whole new.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'll move to table.
Second.
I have a motion, uh, the second to table, item, item N, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Presentations. Presentation by Sprint regarding Geotab GPS County da-da-da.
Judge, Judge Protem, Commissioners, uh, we have instituted a GPS system for vehicles in the county, and, uh, we had a trial run of about ninety days. Sprint is here to present some of their findings, um, talk about some of the things that they saw in this present, in this pilot program. And with that, I'll turn the pro- the presentation over to them.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Our protection left, man. You know, there are no more guns and clothes.
Can you tell us where their cars are going?
Is it the sheriff's department?
Oh, no.
Yeah, they, they weren't part of the pilot.
And we need Rudy.
Oh, uh, which precinct? Four, yes, we can. Well, if it pleases the court, we can, uh, do a couple of things. We, we submitted a detailed summary of the, the findings from the pilot program to the court, uh, I believe as part of the agenda last Thursday. So we can proceed into Q and A, or we can go over the findings in detail, whichever you prefer.
Show me where you saved us money.
Sure, can do that. So if you will refer to page two.
Both of them?
That's the, uh, summary data for the Cameron County Geotab Pilot Program. It's a bunch of charts, tables.
I don't think I have.
I didn't get any of that.
Um, sure, yeah, I can put it on the screen for you. Let me pick it up real quick.
Go to the restroom. He abandoned ship.
Well, if you didn't receive the, uh, the, the report, we'd be happy to, uh, email that to you or, uh, we, we did submit that, uh, on Thursday of last week here. There we go. Ah, okay, perfect, okay. So there's an old saying, you don't know what you don't know till you know it. And, uh, th- this is particularly highlighted in the, uh, the data that we acquired and, uh, in, in our efforts with the Auditor's Department to look at historic fuel usage for the county. There are some unknown variables, and now we've got some metrics by which you, uh, you can measure. We took a look at, uh, twelve-month fuel usage data for the vehicles in the pilot, uh, total gallons uh, from, uh, May of two thousand and twelve to April two thousand and thirteen. Because the, the pilot program started in, uh, May of two thousand and thirteen and, and is currently running today. Based on, uh, that, that information, you guys are spending an average of three hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-eight cents per vehicle for fuel. During the, uh, the pilot program, uh, we considered full months of June and July two thousand and thirteen. August isn't finished yet, and you were in various stages of implementation during, uh, the, the month of May. So we did see a overall reduction in fuel versus your year, uh, your year-over-year average for two thousand and twelve of almost forty-eight percent. However, um, it is worth noting that since you didn't deploy fleet-wide and there isn't really a, a full fleet policy in place, where you guys can kind of utilize this data from a management perspective, it's kind of hard to quantify a hard number on, hey, we saved, you know, thirty-eight percent on fuel because some employees treat, you know, the, the performance of the program differently. I don't know if that makes any sense or not. In other words, when, when you look at the raw data and you compare things like idle time, uh, speeding, hard acceleration, hard braking, um, we did see a drop month over month in various different categories. We, we attribute that to maybe self-correction from a behavior perspective. In other words, you know that the Geotab device is installed in your vehicle, so you're being a little bit more careful um, with, with the way you're utilizing that asset. When you look at the raw data, um, you'll notice that that didn't apply across the board, which we would attribute, you know, to policy. But we do know certain things for sure. No matter which way you cut it, when you look at the annual average or, or month over month, uh, the county did spend less money on fuel during the pilot program. So, uh, we also saw, uh, quite a, a dramatic instance of speeding violations. And, and we did want to make sure that we explained how, how that piece works. So the system, it's got default parameters, and it measures a violation, if you will, of, uh, any. of any instance where a vehicle is traveling in excess of five miles an hour over the posted speed limit, okay? This is simply just a tool that allows you as a manager or department head to gauge whether or not maybe they were passing another vehicle in traffic, or whether or not it was a prolonged instance of a high rate of speed, whether it was on the expressway or in town or in a school zone and that kind of thing. So, in the, in the instance of August, we saw 6,996 incidences of vehicles traveling over five miles an hour over the speed limit. That has a direct correlation to hard costs and fuel usage. So, the faster you travel, the more gas you use, and that's never a good thing, especially when you look at, look at it from a safety perspective as well. We also saw 6,064 incidences of seatbelt non-usage. Anytime your vehicle beeps at you indicating, hey, you didn't put your seatbelt on, but the vehicle's in motion, the system captures that kind of data as well. So, ultimately, the big question here is, does the system pay for itself or not, and will you guys be able to continue using the system going forward? I think Martha mentioned earlier at the, at the start of the meeting today, that looking at two months of data of actual, real-time, you know, usage is, while very enlightening, does not a overall trend make. So, I wouldn't feel comfortable necessarily with you basing your decision entirely off of, how much gas did we save during the pilot program? But what the, the data that we acquired does allow us to do is look at trending and using statistics that are, you know, proven time and time again from various sources, like the Department of Energy and others, case studies from folks like the Aberdeen Group, et cetera. We have made some determinations based on the data from the pilot program, and we've determined that you can save by eliminating excess speed, $12 a month per vehicle, eliminating hard acceleration or hard braking, $8 a month per vehicle, and reducing idle time, which is a huge, huge deal. During the month of July 2013, for example, the, the system measures idle time as the vehicle in idle, meaning it's not in motion, idling over ten minutes. So, you get a kind of a ten-minute window to account for stopping at a stoplight, or you're stuck in traffic, you know, that kind of thing. So, granted, some of that, that usage is actually authorized, for example, by like the constables or, you know, folks in law enforcement that they're parked somewhere. You had 1,036 hours and 55 minutes of idle time, which...
How much of that was law enforcement versus non-law enforcement?
The majority of it was non-law enforcement.
We pretty much subtracted constables.
Yeah, yeah, and so, we actually subtracted the 25% out for legitimate use, and based on that, we still feel very confidently that if you were to eliminate that, that excess of idle time through policy, the county could realize a $15.18 per vehicle savings as well.
And this, this also accounts for over five minutes of idle time.
Five or 10?
So, it's not, it's not starting at the point the vehicle starts to idle. Excess of idle time in the system calculates if a vehicle's been stationary with the engine running for an excess of five minutes. So, this isn't your traditional, I'm stopping at a red light, I'd like to change idling. This is considerable idle time, I'm parked at a gas station while somebody runs in to get a drink or something.
On the speed, how, how much of it was factored law enforcement versus non-law enforcement?
So, there's, we've got detailed reports, and David has a copy of those. They were too big to give you guys, like the 12-megabyte Excel spreadsheet file with literally thousands of different data points. And there's, it's not just related to law enforcement. We, we did do kind of an exit survey with each department, and what we found was an overall positive view of the solution. Definitely, departments want to integrate the, the data and the reporting more into their individual workflow in their departments and make it more part of routine operations, so that they can utilize the system more and realize the benefits more.
Have any of the departments been offered this data yet and gone over with the department head?
Absolutely, yeah. They've had access, I know Parks, for example, they, they're running a ton of reports, or not Parks, Public Works. I, I met with them personally, and they're running a ton of reports. Constable Precinct Four as well, you know, reported some, some benefits from having access to that data as well. And others, it's more of a, a matter of the, the county implementing a comprehensive policy that, that will allow you to utilize this data in a variety of different ways.
Well, and an example of this is, anybody with children who drive understand what you look for in a good driving, a good driver, right? You want to monitor how they treat the vehicle. If they're accelerating hard in that vehicle, if they're going over the speed limit, these are all common sense factors that we all take into account when we expect children, teenagers, or even employees to drive vehicles. You know, we see this time and time again, especially in general business or enterprise, large corporations like UPS, who have to keep a very, very in-depth, close view on everything their drivers are doing. This information is useless unless you implement policy around it. Unless you say, or you implement a policy that says excessive idle time is not something Cameron County wants. We have to reduce that. By reducing these factors, you automatically save fuel, you save wear and tear on your vehicle, you save maintenance on your vehicle, and you extend the life of your vehicle. If you only look at this from a fuel savings and you don't look at it from a maintenance perspective as well, then what you're not accounting, and the cost, the X factor that you're not seeing, is the replacement cost of vehicles, the premature failure of engines, as well as transmissions, drive components, and those types of things that also contribute to a significant cost factor that you don't directly see by just looking at these numbers.
And, and that's a great point. So, when it comes to return on investment, all we can do is try to project based off the data that we've acquired. And based off that data, when you look at spending $313 per vehicle on average for fuel in the previous 12 months versus the average monthly fuel used during the pilot program, you guys save 48%. Whether, whether or not that holds true, I, I think is certainly up for debate, considering, you know, seasonality and, and policy, right? So, and, well, and we factored in for gas prices as well, because we know you, you guys pay seven cents less than whatever the price is at the pump. So, we looked at the, the average fuel cost last year here in Cameron County and reduced that by seven, seven cents to come to that 3000 number.
And these factors were truly based around us trying to be as conservative as possible with the numbers.
Absolutely.
To reflect a very accurate view, because again, you can't be exact on with the two, two and a half month pilot. You know, this is statistical data that we formulated, calculated with the information we received from Cameron County, as well as the information that we've gathered from the system itself.
Yeah, but I guess in closing, I mean, either way you cut it, if you look at the, the monthly fuel cost post-pilot and policy, you know, you could save 59% year-over-year if last year's average held true. It would be up to you guys if you wanted to poll previous year's, you know, fuel usage and look at that to see if, if that trending is... I, I think the truth lies somewhere maybe in the middle when it comes to all of this. But, you know, either way, we're very confident that the solution will definitely pay for itself, and the county will receive additional benefits as well, both financially, but as well as from a safety perspective, which is very, very important. And one thing that we weren't able to factor into all this is, I don't know who your insurance carrier is, but you may want to check with them, because a lot of commercial insurance providers now are utilizing this type of data to implement discounts for their customers.
Exactly. Anytime you put a system like this in place, it's always...
Unless you have a lot of speeding violations.
Then they're going to increase your rate.
Increase your rate, you know?
Well, well, so, so, I, I think, I think a good thing to look at is, pre, or actually at the inception of the, the program, and this was a lot of data to crunch, guys, so I'm trying to, you know, keep it as concise as possible. The, the May exception report showed 28,000 instances of speeding. That's a big number, right? If you'd really, if you do the math, though, it equates to about seven, seven or eight times a day per vehicle, okay? In a 30-day month, that's not a 20-day, a 20-day work month. Whereas if you look at August month-to-date, you're down to around two to three. So, just by the virtue of simply having the system in place, I think folks are being more, are more aware. When you guys start to turn on other features, like the audible driver notifications, where it actually beeps at you and coaches you, nobody in this room can say that they're a perfect driver, certainly not me. But when you've got a tool in place that can let you know, hey, by the way, the speed limit here is 65, not 75, maybe you should, you know, cut it down a little bit, that definitely helps. Ultimately, this is a, definitely a tool that can help you guys out going forward, and, you know, we're, we're pleased to work with you in any way that you'd like to. Were there any other questions?
Well, one thing to keep in mind as well, when, just the comment you made regarding, you know, how many speeding violations there are in insurance. The fact that you have to think about when you go over that is that insurance generally is based on the fact that they don't know how your fleet's driving. They don't believe that you have a clear oversight of how your people are treating those vehicles. So, they're not looking at this information. Your insurance company has no access to this information. What they see by implementing this type of policy is now supervisor-level people have insight into what their drivers are doing, and with that insight, does that cause driver behavior change?
That's why companies like Progressive, for example, rolled out snapshots. State Farm is doing the, is doing the same kind of thing. So, trying, trying to get more statistical data on folks to say, hey, I am a good driver, I am doing what I need to do.
And the largest shipping company in the United States uses this application.
United States Mail?
Well, shipping company for packages, UPS.
UPS.
Do you, I guess, how long is our pilot program supposed to last?
Indefinite.
So, how long would it take?
We had a 90-day, but we wanted to see if we could stretch this out a little bit longer.
Well, so Martha can give us, you know, an analysis and tell us yea or nay, because in the end, it's going to come down to, is it paying for itself at the very minimum? And then, if not, you know, what's our cost? Because as you can hear from all morning discussion on budget, it becomes an issue.
Yeah.
So, that, I mean...
And in the agenda... How much can she book on savings? Right now, right now. But how long of a period would you need to be able to look?
To book something.
To say, you know what, over the course of the last six months or 12 months, whatever, there's been a savings of 38%? You know, I mean, I'm, I can reduce that expense by that amount.
I think that, that the recommendation from a, from a fiscal and a, and a conservative viewpoint right now would be to continue the pilot program with the vehicles that we have right now. We have about 124, 125 vehicles onboard, and continue to factor that in, include the, the monthly cost for these vehicles. And at the end of nine months, nine months from now, once they...
Like a year.
The fiscal, yeah, once we have a full year in the program, let's see what, what the benefit has been. I mean, have we had a change? Have we had a safety, a more transparent, accountable program here? And at that point, then, we would be able, perhaps next year, we could bring in more vehicles, considering what the results of this pilot program are going to reflect.
Are all the features that are available at the cost that we're paying being utilized right now?
That would be no. You guys have everything.
I mean, can we, can we just say, you know, after five minutes of idling, shut it down, turn it off?
Well, yeah, we talked about that last time, you know, for, for safety reasons. I mean, you can, through policy, you can say that, you know, this, this is the way we want to operate, and then you can hold people accountable, you know, to those, to the metrics that you define. I, I think one of the, I got a big headache when I first started analyzing this data with the Auditor's Office, right? Because I know, and everybody else knows, that this is something that saves everybody money when they implement it. The, the challenge that we have, and I think the reason why you're not seeing a more dramatic savings or cutting fuel costs, or whatever way you want to slice it, is because literally what we've done is pretty much put the tool in place, and there hasn't really been a, a policy from the court on those metrics and, you know, how, how the county's going to utilize that from a overall perspective. And, and that's a, a big challenge many customers have, is you really have to have a thought through, a well-thought-out, green-driving, green-fleet policy, and there's many, many examples out there that are available, but you've got to at some point say, okay...
But what else are we paying for we're not utilizing?
For example, the audible notifications that alert the driver.
Slow down.
We using that?
It's really, really a discretion. I mean, you know, everything is...
I mean, it should be a no-brainer, you know?
Everything is enabled for you guys to use, and it's really up to departments on how they want to utilize those features and, you know, coaching employees and things of that nature, so...
Well, one of the things I think we really need to look at, and again, because I haven't seen the data, but you're going, the speed, you're going to have that in law enforcement, no matter what.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, I'd like to see a, a separate law enforcement versus non-law enforcement on the idle and speed.
Sure.
Because that'll give us, I think, a better idea of the true savings, because you're always going to have speed involved in law enforcement, whether it's going on a pursuit, whether it's responding to an emergency, whether it's...
Going to lunch.
Going to lunch or whatever. I mean, the speed laws don't apply to law enforcement.
Sure, absolutely.
So, so there's, you know, there's going to be a fa, a non-factor there. But on the other end, a lot of our other departments that, that do have to adhere, that will give us a true savings, I think.
You know, we've actually, in, in some instances with some cities, deploying the same type of solution. Speed does not generally apply to law enforcement, but there still are laws and rules around how law enforcement officers can utilize speed, whether they have to have their lights on, their sirens on, things to clear traffic. And when we've installed this solution, you've actually had the ability with additional hardware to track if that vehicle was speeding with its lights on, with its sirens on, with equipment, emergency equipment actually active during that, because, believe it or not, some of the most astounded customers we have with the data are police chiefs, are the people who actually look at the data and see what their officers are doing, see what their deputies are doing, and make corrective changes based off of that. So, this is absolutely a product that we can tailor for the specific departments that we're needing to tailor towards. As part of this pilot, a very small number of the units were actually installed in police vehicles. The vast majority of them were installed inside of your traditional white fleet vehicles, which means the skewed data that you would actually get from perhaps the constables or a few of the law enforcement vehicles still probably wouldn't account for such a high number of violations.
So, that, and that's, I guess, that's my question. I don't know, I don't know how to just...
Yeah, you've got maybe, I'm not sure on the hard numbers, I'd have to look at the spreadsheet, but I would say not more than 20% of the total vehicles utilizing the system were assigned to constables and, and that, you know, those kinds of folks.
So, you've got a lot of speeders in the county.
Not as many now as, as before. I, I would go as far as to say that. I wish very, so, it took, we had to reach out to Geotab to give me the, the report for the full fleet, and I got the report for May last night, and, you know, going from 28,000 to almost seven, I think is progress in the right direction, and that's without a mandate from anybody saying, hey, you know what, this is the policy, sign off on it, that you're aware of it, you know, and that kind of thing. So, again, you know, we'll, we'll let that, you know, be up to you guys to figure that out. But certainly, we're very confident in the fact, and, and, you know, we'll let you guys move on from here. But, you know, the data's there, the, the tool is awesome, it works. All the departments say, hey, we, we like it, we want more training, and, you know, we're working toward facilitating that. So, we would like to see, hopefully, you, you guys entertain the idea, at least with certain departments that don't have a full deployment, of, you know, making them whole, so to speak, from a fleet management perspective, because that will be, will enable you guys to compare apples to apples much easier.
And I believe from a priority perspective as well, the question everyone's asking is, will this system pay for itself? And if it does, what is the net benefit of that? And I believe the question that you have to then pose are, what are the rules that are appropriate to start assigning immediately to start seeing that positive change? Because all you have in these vehicles right now essentially is a recorder. You have a capturing device. So, it's capturing behavior as it currently exists. For this to truly be an effective tool, you have to then put enforcement in place, or at least a policy, something that at least lets people know that we're not only monitoring idle time, but we're taking control over it. Once those rules are in place that are based around seatbelt, seatbelt violations, hard acceleration's a no-brainer. violations, hard acceleration's a no-brainer, right? Everyone knows if you drag race your car, it's going to waste a lot of gas. Once these rules are implemented and put in place, that's where you'll start seeing the cost of the solution truly outweigh the, or sorry, the cost of the solution truly not be as much of a factor anymore because of what it's saving you.
And we'd venture to say, based on things that I've read about other implementations elsewhere, you guys may want to think about like an incentive-based program as well, you know, not just, "Hey, here's the rules," but, you know, they're kind of the carrot-and-the-stick approach. I know you guys are talking a lot today about, you know, pay and, you know, things of that nature. So that's something that's worked very well in the private sector and, you know, some public sector entities as well, of saying, "Hey, here's our goal on, you know, fuel reduction for our green program." And we've, the tool has driver scorecard reports and things of that nature that can help you guys implement things like that as well.
Let's go ahead and, since you're standing up there, let's go ahead and go to item F. It's consideration and direction regarding implementation, utilization of the Sprint Geotab GPS system as per HDAC, co-op inter-local purchasing agreement.
So you had, Judge Potem, you had two proposals in the background. One would be the one that we're currently at with 124 vehicles, and then the other one would increase to the amount of vehicles in our fleet. And I think right now, we're probably more comfortable staying at the level that we're at, monitoring that, putting in some of the, some of the things that we're not using. Commissioner, you mentioned, you know, that we want to make sure that our different departments are utilizing through that system, and then come back with a report to you.
Is that going to give you a good picture, Martha? Just sticking with what we have?
I think that's what we can go with right now, and can give us at least sufficient time to work through the program. And it can also serve as a guide in the event that the court wishes to move forward and address vehicle usage better, a policy. So I think that's a good direction to go in.
The only ones we don't have involved, you know, to a certain extent right now, is law enforcement, the sheriff's department. And so we can try to work with them and see if they're interested in coming onboard at some point.
They probably ought to do a pilot in their department.
We'll talk to them and see if maybe at a later date, we can bring one.
I mean, this contract price is available all the time.
Yes, sir.
Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
To approve the current.
I have a motion to approve, and I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need a-
And acknowledge the discretion.
I need a motion, the acknowledgement. Thank you. Covering both. Presentation, thank you all. Presentation of third-quarter revenue report for Parks and Recreation. You have three minutes.
All right, Judge Potem, Commissioners, real quick, the, we had a good quarter, except for Andy Bowie, we were down. And what that, the reason we were down is because of, I was looking at our report, the detailed report, and it shows that we've, we hadn't had that many refunds that we've had in the past. And then the other thing was the concession percentage. We had a $21,000 percentage payment that came in last, last year in, let's see, the month of May. So that's where the big difference is in the decrease. But other than that, we had, you know, Isla Blanca Park, we're up, let's see, it was 7.5 percent, which is 105,000. Andy Bowie, of course, we're down 9.8 percent, 12,000. Adolf Tomé, we're up 4.3 percent, which is $3,643. Public Beaches, we're up 13.7, which is 38,733. And then Community Parks were up 18 percent, which is $795. Any questions on the revenue part?
Yeah. On the four, and the first, the Isla Blanca, our occupancy for the quarter was 59 percent?
Yes.
Okay, and, you know, I got a, and legal stopped me if I'm off-base here, you know? But I'm, you know, I was out a couple of weeks and came back, and the most calls that I had coming to me was on a potential change to how the reservations are handled at Isla Blanca Park, which I thought was kind of interesting, and I maybe missed something at a meeting somewhere. Has this court discussed that?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Isla Blanca Park. You know, I'm looking at 59 percent occupancy, first of all, for the quarter. That means we had four out of every 10 slots open, right?
Right. And that's, that's the average for the quarter.
For the quarter?
Yes.
Yes. Well, you know, I had a number of calls come to me about a change of how people reserve their slots at Isla Blanca Park being contemplated.
Being contemplated?
Yes. You know, and I'm saying, if we already have four out of 10 slots open, why are we changing anything?
Yeah, the reason is, is that during the summer, which is a peak time, part of June, July, and August, you know, we're at 100 percent. And there's no spaces available for people outside-
Okay, so when, give me the date to the last quarter.
April, May, and June.
So June is not considered peak month?
June is.
June is.
But if you take the average of April, May, which is, you know, it's, they're not, we're not at 100 percent, it reduces the average for the quarter, for the-
So June, we were full. April, May, we were empty.
Right. Yeah. May, it, you know, it kind of, it starts to pick up.
Yeah. So why are we making changes?
Well, it was an idea because, I guess they had received some complaints, because people couldn't get in.
I mean, what is the process on Isla Blanca Park? How do you reserve a space?
What you do is, if you come in that day, you're supposed to come in, let's say it's May 1st. You come in May 1st, you pay your deposit for next year, for 2014.
Okay.
So you have that site reserved next year when you come in.
What happens if you don't come?
If you don't come in, then you lose the site. Somebody else can-
And you lose your deposit?
Correct. You don't lose your, you don't lose your deposit, you just lose your site.
Why don't you lose your deposit?
That's not how we drafted up the rules. You just, you just lose the site.
And what's the deposit for?
The deposit, the deposit is just to keep the site. If you come in, let's say you're supposed to come in May 1st, you come in May 2nd, you've already lost your site for next year, okay? But you use that $100 for the utilities, for the rent, and everything else.
Okay. So what's wrong with that system?
To me personally, I don't see anything wrong with it now.
You know, because you're having an uproar of people that have been there some upwards of 20 years, that have made improvements on their slots, or wherever. I mean, I guess, what is it called? A slot?
Slat.
Yes, the site.
A site, that made improvements to sites and liked to keep the same neighbor. I mean, it's kind of like being in a neighborhood. You choose to live in a neighborhood, and you kind of, at the same time, choose neighbors, right?
Right.
It's pretty much the same thing, from what I've seen and the visits that I've made to Isla Blanca Park, is there's like pockets of neighborhoods within the park. And people kind of choose who they want to be around by reserving their slots.
The other thing, Commissioner, that they, the reason they choose certain areas is because we've upgraded, like the new, all the new sites have 50 amp service.
Right.
So all the old sites don't. So if you have a half a million dollar bus, you're coming in, you will not be able to stay in the old part of the park unless we upgrade it. And that's one of the issues that I had with the concept of going with the lottery. You know, some people may not be able to-
Where did this lottery come from?
Yeah, who, when did we decide to change it? Who decided?
Yeah, no, no, it's not a decision or any action that was taken. It was just an idea that the judge came up with. He wanted a group of us to look at and kind of evaluate it. And we've been just looking at it and throwing it around, throwing around the idea.
Did we discuss that at a meeting, or he just unilaterally decided that?
He called a meeting and asked us to look into that. I-
Well, I'd like for you to, look, I want to dispel any issues in the future for our park residents. Whatever the majority of this court wants to do, I have absolutely no problem with. But I do want to go on record, so I will be putting on an item, or ask you to put out an item, however you want to do it, for next week, so that we can either get rid of this lottery, or approve the lottery system. I will not allow for rumors, innuendos, and all kinds of stuff to go on when it's really unnecessary. If the majority of the court wants to do it, hey, not a, I mean, we'll live with the decision. But at this point, we need to put it on the agenda.
Yeah. I mean, I had concerns too. In fact, I went and met with you, because people were calling me. So I, that's, let's put it on.
Put it on the agenda, and whatever the majority wants, let's go with it, but let's do it based on-
Okay. I do have that item on the agenda for our park advisory board tomorrow evening, so we'll discuss it, and then we can put it on the agenda for next-
That'd be great. You'll do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was the only question I had on that.
On our revenue part, and expenditures, I should say, we're doing fine. The, there's, I believe there's one that we are in the negative, one of the expenses, which is our Greens division. It's $5,105. That was at the end of the month of June. July, August, and September, of course, we've stopped issuing POs, so we'd be able to back that out and be in a positive number. But other than that, it's-
Have you had, how much money do you have in your capital accounts, or in your surplus, or wherever you get it from, to do some upgrades to some of those sites?
We have projected, I believe it was 75,000. That was the first, yeah, that was the first year. Then we had the second year, which we haven't done any improvements. And then we have this year's coming up that we-
So we have money available?
We do have money available.
When do we start doing some upgrades?
Well, we are working with engineering right now to do some improvements to Dodson and Emerald. That'll, by doing those improvements, we'll be able to increase that area with nine sites. So we'll be able to pick up nine more sites by doing those improvements.
Okay.
One of the things that the engineering department is requiring of us is a subdivision plat. We have to subdivide that section.
Our engineering department? To do an improvement on existing electrical? Why?
Because what we're doing is, I guess, reorganizing, restructuring that whole area, because right now, we have, I believe, 62 sites on Dodson, and we have like 27 on Emerald. So we'll be increasing those, because we're straightening them out. I'm not sure if you've been to Dodson, but there's the old Cabana slabs, and there's four RVs around that one slab. So we're going to straighten them out and make them uniform. We're going to make them wide. By doing all that-
Well, just have engineering replant it for you.
So that's what they're doing for us.
But, hold on, I mean, did you talk to, because again, like what you said, if there's little groups of people that all park around a slab and share that community slab and have been doing that, is it going to cause a disruption among the people that go there? In other words, do they have their little areas that the same four people that rent those slabs and spend all summer together?
Well, they're going to stay there. They just won't be front to front. You know, their front doors will be facing your front door of the trailer. There's four people that their front doors face each other. It's a small area. And the reason that we're doing this is because the utilities are really old in that area. So we want to upgrade it. In order to upgrade it, we're just going to fix, fix everything.
So you are replanting?
Yes.
And you're going to take out the cement slabs and then just do inline?
Yeah, and that's what we're trying to figure out, whether we want to go through that expense of demoing those slabs, or just maybe fill the lots up and just leave the concrete slabs there. So we could, if we could figure out where those sites are going to be, maybe they'd be able to utilize those existing slabs instead of tearing them out.
Okay.
So how much is each site going to cost? Like you're saying you're adding an additional nine?
Right.
So how much does each site cost?
Each site costs us generally about $2,800 to make all the improvements, the water, electricity, and sewer. And then, of course, depending on what we do, if it's concrete or if it's asphalt, on average, is about $2,800 to $3,000.
Do we offer cable?
Yes.
And that'll be new cable as well?
Cable also.
Anything else I got? That's it?
That's it.
Motion to acknowledge. Okay, have a motion to acknowledge?
Second.
Have a motion second to acknowledge report. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Executive session, I need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion second to go into executive session. Motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are going to table items A and B. We will concern ourselves with C, D, E, and F. C, Commissioners Court Counsel concerning the Salasal family partnership versus Cameron County. D, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning the state of Texas versus Rinaldo Gutierrez. Item E, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning the state of Texas versus Larry Mark Polsky. And F, discussion, discussed business incentives for SpaceX, a company proposing to locate in Cameron County.